By the way, you're live.
We have a lot of signing to do.
Yeah.
You should go get the stamp.
Yeah. I would like to call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. No one here for public comment? Consent agenda, I'd like to poll a couple of items, G and H from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that anyone would like to vote on the consent agenda?
Yes, same for me.
Okay, great. Do I hear a motion to accept the consent agenda except for G and H?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I missed who made the motions.
So, the reason I wanted to poll G and H, I just wanted to honor them and I just wanted to say that we're very sorry to receive the resignation of Angie Cook from the Auditor's Office and so I just wanted to say that and then I also wanted to say welcome to social worker Jade Wolfman, Public Health and Human Services. So, I just wanted to make a special point of honoring them. So, do I hear a motion to accept those two items?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great, so right, again, we're right on time and ahead of schedule. Excellent. So, we have Lisa Storey and Jeff Cadwell will be presenting the Roden Bridge budget this morning for our review, 2018 budget review. Thanks.
Well, look at this.
Look at this, yes.
You, you.
We want to train our necks.
So, if you're on that side, does that mean we get to fire you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I think it's important that I sit here with Lisa while we're presenting this budget to lend the administrative support. She's done a lot of work, but the assumptions are not hers, they're those of the department. Much of this work was already in place before David left us. The assumptions have been double-checked by Russ and Charlie and myself, so I think that we've always counted on Lisa's ability to summarize this and put this together for us, but administratively, she's not responsible for presenting this budget. But I'm going to let her, go ahead. Have you all received the copies at this point?
Yeah, it's in the, the highway is in the brown folder.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
So, I am going to let Lisa go ahead and take it and give a summary and we'll answer questions that you have.
Great, thanks, Lisa.
I don't know if you've all had a chance to review the budget narrative that I had submitted. Our budget has a whole new component for 2018 and that, of course, is the Greater Minnesota Transportation Sales and Use Tax Project List. And so, the biggest change for us is that Attachment A, in terms of the projects and programs, which for 2018 has projected total of $5,946,432, and we will go over that in great detail because you can see that we are leveraging a number of funding sources for 2018, most notably, hopefully, the bonding that we're going to do with the transportation sales tax money. Attachment B, just to give you a highlight, contains our capital expenditures for 2018. We have made some changes. Of course, there are the greater payments, which are part of the budget cycle from 2016 and 2017, and they totaled just over $208,000. You will see that we have recommended deleting a few items that were originally submitted on our capital replacement plan. There are two steamers, which are in our outlying shops, and from the Highway Department perspective, it makes the most sense to actually replace those as part of the facility upgrade, which is tentatively slated for 2018 with bonds. So, that would remove $24,000 off the levy. Additionally, there was a gravel conveyor and screen that was on there for $250,000, which we are recommending be cut. The long-term plan was to recertify everyone through MSHA and do some crushing to augment what we already contracted. We wouldn't be replacing the contract work. However, the additional certifications, the risks for work comp, the staffing strains that it would cause, really cannot, in our mind, justify that kind of purchase, and so we're recommending that that be cut. And then, on Attachment C, you're going to see that we do incorporate a proposed 15% health insurance increase, and then we have step increases and a projected 2.5% COLA that account for $51,344,000. So, between those two items, we have a total increase of $110,778 in personnel costs projected for 2018. Those are the highlights in terms of the changes. Additionally, at the Board's request, we have added $150,000 worth of calcium chloride back to the 2018 budget. As you know, that was eliminated for 2017. Because of the rain, we had not received a lot of calls until the last week. We've had at least 10. People are not happy that the roads are now dusty because the rain has let up, and I don't know if the Commissioners have been getting any calls.
Yes.
Yes.
And emails.
And then, just as
And I've agreed.
Just as a request, we do respectfully ask that we discuss salt, sand, storage, and our engineering test lab as we talk about long-term facility needs. So, that's the summary from the narrative. Hopefully, your budget will fold out as mine does, so that it's easy to read in terms of the 11-by-17 size. I don't know how much time you want to spend on standard things like personnel costs in each of our five departments. For our new Commissioner, Commissioner Duchamp, we are set up with administration, engineering, maintenance, shop, and then what we call work for others, and that has a couple of different categories. Some of that we bill, and some is what we call authorized work contributions, where the Board directs us to do work and we just track what that costs, and we don't actually bill anybody for it. So, you're going to see that we have this broken out into those different areas. The first one, administration, is usually pretty cut and dry because there are three staff in that department, the engineer, myself, and a clerk. And then, we have other services and charges, which are just kind of an overarching, the general things. For example, if we're doing facility studies, if we have general administrative contracts for time card support, phone charges, and things that are considered more of the administrative end, that falls in there. One thing that will be of note for our newer Commissioners is that our engineering staff training has to fall under administration by MINDOT contracts. So, when we have new engineering technicians that we are training, this cost area spikes because of that. We did an estimate a couple of years ago, and it costs upwards of $18,000 to train a new technician because of all the certifications that are required. Supplies, we don't have much for a budget, you know, we're just talking things like our office papers, staples, pens, those types of things, and we actually have nothing for capital outlay projected in 2018 for our administration area. So, you can see, really, the only increase is what we had talked about in terms of increases for our health insurance and potentially a 2.5% cost of living adjustment. Are there any questions on the administration area?
Mr. Storey, it's okay. It's okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Under general road signs, could you clarify exactly how that should be done in terms of what I find on the back roads? I did a little travel the last week on the Kramer Road and discovered that there is no signage when you want to find Sugarloaf Road. The post, everything is down, and I just talked to Kirk about that, but is that something that the department wants to know about in the highway? Or?
Yes, it would be helpful to know, of course, and depending on the roads, in that case, of course, that's a township road. Sometimes, we have jurisdiction over signings, sometimes we don't, but we can always find out for you whom we need to deal with in terms of assigning authority. For example, was it the green, the small road sign that you're talking about, or was it a sign actually placed on the county road?
Apparently, it was at a junction.
So, I'm thinking it was probably the green street sign, and actually, that comes out of, for right now, I believe Valerie's area is taking over some of the signage. Historically, it's been IT, but we can always take those calls, Commissioner Storey, and we will make sure that we get that information related to the correct department or authority.
So, I should talk to her, you're saying?
No, I will make a note of it.
Okay.
And I will take care of it.
Okay. And then, going further up the road, before you get to Lake County, there's a post with a very bent Cook County sign. So, that is on the county road, okay? And I could send pictures, if that is your department, or will that be Valerie's?
No, just go ahead and send them to me, Commissioner, and I will follow up on that. And where was that second sign? It was further up towards the Lake County line?
Right. Cook County.
Oh, Cook County, Lake County.
The green sign.
The line on both sides.
Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Storey, gunflood trail signs are apparently really popular to some people, so there are constantly signs missing on the gunflood trail. The county website has a great app. You send it to that, and the right person gets it, because everybody gets notice, and that's the easiest way to go, rather than trying to call around and find out who you need to tell. Just go right on the county website, hit the app, and do the report, and they answer you immediately, and they tell you that it's been ordered, or that it's been taken care of, or it's already been reported. And I find that is the fastest, quickest way, because then I don't have to figure out whose department has what sign. So, anyone listening, you see a sign, just use the county website, it is fabulous. And it does take a little while to produce new signs and get them up.
And thank you for that. I was just trying to make this one easy for Commissioner Storey. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the first
Lisa, I just want a clarification on, you said the techs, it costs the county about $18,000 to get their certifications, et cetera. And I just wanted to clarify that that's not something they can come with, that is something that is unique to them being here?
It's unique to county government, so if we do have someone that has been at another county government or at a state agency such as MINDOT, they may come with some or all of those certifications, and then it's just a matter of the regular research. It typically takes about two years for all of those certifications to occur, because they're stepped, there's grading base and grading and base one, grading and base two, and so there are usually two steps in terms of each certification.
Great, thank you for that clarification.
Okay. If there are no more questions, we'll move on to the maintenance area. Again, you will see that the wages and benefits reflect those increases that we had touched on in terms of the health insurance and the COLA. Our work comp changes have not, our work comp premiums are not seeing any remarkable difference, of course, in the maintenance area, they are the most significant because of the highest risk there. If you look down, we've kept everything pretty much the same as 2017. So, our bituminous material that we use for patching, for cold patching, our crack sealing and striping contracts, we're projecting to expand about the same amount, the same with crushed gravel. The most notable change, of course, is calcium chloride has gone from zero to 150,000. We had spent anywhere from 138,000 to 168,000 in the last five years, and so that seemed to be somewhere in the middle in terms of what we could do and start to recoup that program, and that, of course, will be the Board's decision to make, yes.
So, was that the Budget Committee that recommended that one back in? Because I don't know if we, as a Board, have fully discussed it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner DuKirk, we're discussing it now. Based on everything that we've heard and based on the conversations from the Budget Committee, we thought the best thing to do was represent it in until somebody directs that it come back out.
Well, the comments I'm getting in my district is that the Board cut it in order to save our waters and prevent aquatic invasive species, so I would like to have a discussion on it, because I think that there's mixed messaging going out there. I mean, I don't know if all the Commissioners support putting it back in, because it seems to me that some Commissioners are saying that it's better to leave it out.
I'm thinking that today is just to go through what's in, and we need to consider it, and we will have discussion about it.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I think this, today, is the overview and the summaries and a listing of the questions, and if there's some research or something that needs to be done related to that, we can do some additional things. This is just the start of our process of walking through our assumptions in detail. Up to this point, we've walked through our assumptions in the macro scale, and now we're looking at them at the department-level scale, and if we have questions as we go along, we'll identify those. And later in my report, we'll talk about the additional meetings that we're going to have to refine these assumptions. So, please, please ask the questions, and we'll make note of the questions and include them
So, my other note on the question is, is 150 enough? Are we just going to start our schedule where we took off, or do we need to do some makeup work? And that's a more detailed question, because we were supposed to be every other year, and we're actually every three years for some roads.
That is true. One of the things that will help us is that we have paid eight miles of the saw bill, and so the heavy, heavy application that occurred there can be used somewhere else, and so I believe that that would be enough to get us back into the program without, you know, having even more detrimental effect on the levy.
Okay, thank you.
But generally, this budget does reflect maintenance at the level that's been supported for the last several years, and I will suggest that our maintenance, if you use the analogy to public health and human services, we're not spending enough money on maintenance on an annual basis to defer and extend the life of the major improvements that we're doing on a regular basis, and at some point, when we get the new engineer onboard, we want to have a conversation, possibly, not for '18, but in the future, of beefing up what we're doing maintenance, so that we can spread out the major reconstructions a little bit further. David would have told you that we did not have a pavement maintenance program, and that was something that he was working towards. The staff that I've talked to have said the allocation that we have for crushed gravel is completely insufficient for the number of miles of road that we maintain. So, the question about, is this the appropriate amount of resources to provide the right level of service? Well, the level of service is the thing that we have to have the conversation about, and what we spend generally on maintenance of gravel roads, of paved roads, on our equipment, those are all specific conversations that we have to have after we have a conversation about what the general level of service is going to be, and that's winter and summer maintenance.
Right, because not putting calcium down has set us back on crushed gravel, because we've had to go over some roads a couple of times.
And some other areas that I believe Administrator Cadwell was referencing would include things like crack sealing, a lack of a seal coat program, the crushed gravel. There are so many areas that a new engineer will, I'm sure, want to be discussing with you down the road.
Thank you.
So, back to the maintenance area, we've kept salt and sand at the same price as 2017, and we just opened our salt bids, and they came in, I mean, winter sand, and it came in at 84,000. He was higher this year, we've only gotten one bid the last two years, so we'll see what happens in 2018. Hopefully, we can get a second bidder, but with Edwin Thorson stepping out, it's difficult to get that second bid. The things in the general road maintenance are pretty standard, it's everything from culverts and signs to erosion control equipment, rental, supplies. Again, it just depends on the actual projects and the needs and how much our maintenance staff can get to each year in terms of what we can expand. One area that we fell short on in 2016 was signs. Hopefully, in 2018, we can really focus on that. I'm not sure how much we're going to get to in 2017 realistically, but there is that federal mandate that we are having to work towards so that we don't lose our federal funding, that retroreflectivity standard that can be a little bit glaring for us, no pun intended, but we will keep working towards that. And then, of course, we have just a small budget for maintenance projects, because we are really focusing efforts on the transportation sales tax projects. That is just for any small thing that might arise and related land acquisition that might go with that. And then, the capital outlay, if you want to flip to Attachment B, we can certainly discuss that at this time and the assumptions that we made. Little equipment policy that the Board approved a few years ago, that is the basis for our equipment replacement schedule, and for pickups, the goal is to replace them every nine to 10 years when they are reaching that 100,000-mile mark. These two pickups will be at that 100,000-mile mark, give or take maybe 5,000 to 7,000 miles in 2018, when we project to trade. The tractor is actually, according to the equipment replacement schedule, long overdue. It will be 25 years old, it has close to 9,500 hours on it right now. It is a, it's been a sound tractor, well-maintained, but again, the stress of that daily mowing operation is something that we want to take off of this tractor, given its age, and it is a scheduled replacement. You will see that we have a note there that we're recommending replacing those steamer units with the construction of the outlying facilities, as tentatively slated for 2018. I've discussed deleting the next two items, and then the last item is the mini excavator. We are renting one the last two years, and the rent really is cost prohibitive, and it is enabling the maintenance staff to accomplish a great deal more in terms of the culvert replacements and the shouldering and ditching work that we need to do, and so that is one of the scheduled items for 2018. And then, you will see, after the subtotal, there are the two greater payments that we're carrying forward from prior years. Questions?
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you for your work on moving equipment to the bonding and switching it, because essentially, you've put us back on track. We budget half a million, try half a million a year in equipment, and by moving those over, even though we've done moving forward of loans, which you all have heard me say I don't like, but this way, we're kind of getting back on track. So, thank you, thank you to the Budget Committee for whatever discussion you've had on this. It's nice that we hopefully won't be pushing the can down the road.
Just to follow up on that, you know, that's not the best practice, but sometimes, timing is everything. And so, you know, with the bonding situation, this is always something to look at, and how can you clean up a little bit of a mess, even, and so I think that's really a good move, too.
Tractor are you replacing for $140,000?
I'm sorry?
What tractor for $140,000?
It's unit 7932, and to give you a little lesson on our numbering system, our heavy equipment starts with a 7. The two middle digits are the year the unit was purchased, so this is a 1993 tractor. And then, the 2 means that it was the second of the items purchased in that year that was put into service. So, it's a 1993 John Deere, I believe.
How many hours is it?
It has, I can give you a pretty good estimate.
You said 9,500?
It was at 9,461 as of December 31, and the last maintenance schedule, one of the temps did, and he didn't put the hours down, so we are, I'm guessing, approaching 9,600 to 9,700 right now.
It's only 380 hours a year that that machine is getting put on, that's approximately?
Yes, sir.
That's a pretty big, I'm sure, 380 hours a year.
Well, one of the things that we've been able to do the last few years, Commissioner Duchamp, is hire three summer temps, and hopefully, we can continue that practice, and if we can move forward with some of our erosion control practices and get them back in the brushers more, you will see those hours potentially increase. With the changes in erosion control standards, the last couple of summers in particular, they've spent some less time in the brushers, and it's just a matter of staffing.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions, comments on maintenance?
Just a reminder on our replacement program for new Commissioners, we do have other counties that look at our replacement plan, because we are not too aggressive and not too far behind, and so they, you know, we need to thank Russell and the staff over there, because we have a sought-after replacement plan when other counties come and look at what we're doing, and so we've kind of hit the sweet spot, we're kind of lucky, even though we've had some huge transmission replacements, because we were off the mark, but we've been pretty good.
And, Madam Chair, Commissioners, I would make two comments about the capital expenditures. One is, we've got a program and a plan that we're following, and I would prefer that we not line item things out of that, but if we want to discuss the comprehensive program, then we can set that back to committee, and we can have a conversation about the comprehensive program and what that looks like. I think we should let the new engineer get onboard. Obviously, we're going to have to deal with this year's budget before that gets finalized. And then, the other comment is, is that greater financing from the 2016 budget process, I believe that there are two payments not shown yet.
Right.
So, there's an additional payment in '19 and '20 for $50,000 scheduled each, so just a reminder that those are out there from our decisions in 2016.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Okay.
All right, let's discuss the engineering area, and this will, I'm sure, take some time. Personnel and benefits, what I said in the other departments applies here, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the other services and charges. You will see that we have the standard amounts of routine and consultant, of course, in 2016, the consultant was extremely high, because we were starting to ramp up for the transportation sales tax and doing a lot of bridge studies in particular. Most of those costs will be reimbursed through state aid. The biggest change you're going to see is, on the next page, you will see that we've added some new line, so we have our state and federal aid projects, which will be just over $2 million projected for 2018, and then our transportation sales tax project line, which is $3,518,632. The other two line items are not real significant, just supplies, and then an air pot for the testing lab under the capital outlay. But what I would like to do is turn to Attachment A, so we can look at the scope of projects for 2018. The Board, and hopefully, our new engineer, will be having to discuss this and make some decisions, in particular about the municipal project for '12. But let's start with the first one, that is the bituminous replacement on South Shore Drive or CASA 18. That is a state aid project, and it's projected to be about a $1.5 million project with $225,000 recouped from engineering costs through state aid submitted when the project closes. Hopefully, we will be able to keep everything on schedule, depending on how the placement and hiring process goes. The next two lines pertain to the CASA 12 project in town here, and that would actually go from Trunk Highway 61 up to
The end of the curve and gutter.
Yeah, the end of the curve and gutter, yes, thank you, just past 15. All of a sudden, I couldn't get the words out. It's broken into two areas, because there has been a request for sidewalk from Trunk Highway 61 to 7, and that is projected to cost $120,000, but there would be some rightaway acquisition that would need to take place there, and so the Board needs to have that discussion with the new engineer. And then, the mill and overlay is just a scheduled mill and overlay, given the age of the pavement, and that, as you can see, is projected to cost about $328,000 with just under $56,000 in engineering costs. We also have the Junko River Bridge slated for construction in 2018, and that is dependent on bridge bonding. We have submitted that request for that $145,000. Again, that depends on legislative action and then prioritization and the picking for us. There would be some match needed from our transportation sales tax, you can see, that's about $55,000, and then we would try and recoup some of the engineering costs through the sales tax, because there are a number of costs that are not state aid or bridge bond eligible because of the location of the bridge and the state aid rule. because of the location of the bridge and the state aid rules. And then, of course, we have the two main transportation sales tax projects that the board has directed the engineering staff to work on, and we have hired contractor or consultants for, excuse me. That is the 45 reconstruction and the 17 reconstruction, and you can see the numbers under transportation sales tax. For County Road 45, the projection, if we stay on our current timeline, is to be doing the final design and the right-of-way acquisition in 2018 to hopefully let the contract for construction, based on what the board's decision is, for late 18 to begin work in 2019. And then, the CASA 17 would actually be under construction in 2018, again, dependent on hiring of an engineer and keeping this process moving forward. And you can see that we have just over $2.3 million for construction, and then the Hollow Rock River Bridge at $112,000 with engineering to be recouped for both of those projects through the transportation sales tax. Thank you. Enormously complex. Christian Burchette.
I asked this when I was on Highway Committee, and I forgot the answer, but maybe it's more applicable now to ask the question again. If we had, you know, we assume we will have an engineer. Assume that if we ever got an assistant engineer looking at design services, would, we need to contract those out just because of the expertise and specificity of those projects? Or if we had, you know, an assistant engineer, would we be more than paying for it and reduce
Commissioner, Madam Chair, the, that's part of a strategic conversation that we want to have, and we want to have that with the new engineer. Having a conversation with Lake County staff and with John McDonald from indot, it's unusual for outstate counties to have two licensed engineers on staff. But that doesn't mean that that's not the right thing for us. And one of the considerations is, how much design capacity do we have in our engineering department versus how much do we have to contract for? And short-term versus long-term cost is generally a part of that conversation. One of the things that we did by authorizing the transportation sales tax is, we immediately created a shortage of our capacity to design projects. And I know that Dave had talked to you all about the fact that we don't have any projects designed on the shelf waiting for funding. We end up having to design things as they, as we get money for them, and sometimes, that doesn't put us in the best situation. So, it is a long-term strategy that we're going to have to have a conversation about. We do have a shortage in engineering staff, based on the additional capacity that we now have with the transportation funding options.
Thank you. I agree.
Other questions? No other questions. Okay.
Madam Chair, it's not on here, but is there any kind of updating on Otis Creek?
Madam Chair Commissioners, story, I will, basically, that's delayed until we get the engineer here to pick that up and put that in the right place and have that conversation and have the public input related to that. The meeting that had been scheduled for this week, this past week, was canceled because we knew we didn't have the capacity to carry forward on that project, and we'll have to sort out the priorities as we move forward once we're staffed again.
Thank you.
I will also give an update quickly on the assumptions for 45 and 17, construction and the consultants. Those are projects that Kristin Foster is here, and she's managing our current construction project with County Road 7. And we've got her here to do the things that we need a licensed engineer to do, to manage these design projects that we have consultants on board for, for 17 and 45. That's something that I'll be doing with the help of you. We had a meeting last week up in Grand Portage to discuss the scope of the 17 project. We're going to be, I'm going to be engaging the LHB staff on the 45 project to move up the public comment and input on that process, so we can have a conversation about scope before we get too far into the design strategy on that. So, I will be managing those two consultant contracts that we have out there with the help of our engineering staff, the engineering techs, and we'll be meeting weekly or monthly to review the progress on those projects, and you'll be getting updates as well. But mostly, what we're doing is, we had a good conversation in Grand Portage about the scope of the County 17 project, and I anticipate that we'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks related to the County 42 to 45 project.
In the next couple of weeks?
Not a public comment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Internally, with our staff and the consultants to have a conversation about scope and timeframe and what we expect to have. There was, there is on the schedule sometime this fall planned for LHB to have a public comment related to the project, and we just need to touch base and figure out what that exact schedule looks like.
Thank you. So, but sometime this fall?
Sometime this fall, there will be an opportunity for the public to comment on that.
Great, thank you. If we continue on Page 2 with the equipment maintenance and shop costs, again, we have the obligatory changes in wages and unemployment and the rest. Does not show anything remarkable in terms of line item changes. In fact, we've kept everything else the same for 2018. The two areas that are most dependent on prices are, of course, utilities and fuel. And you can see that in 2016, we were very fortunate, we ran under on both, and that fluctuates so much for utilities, depending on weather. For the fuel, the fuel market is really what benchmarks that, and you can see that we have gone over substantially in some years. And last year, because of the historically low prices, we were able to run under, because we did not want to assume that that would happen again, we kept our prices at $3.25 a gallon for diesel and $3 a gallon for unleaded in benchmarking our budget. And so, we will see how that works out. We were able to under-run in terms of parts and supplies in 2016. 2017, as you know, we started off with that grader having a major repair, so we will probably run closer to our actual budget in 2017. Does anybody have any questions?
Capital Olay.
Yes, ma'am. We have nothing slated for 2018. Our shop foreman, Steve Butts, had one item that he wanted to work on, but he said it was so complex. It deals with the computer maintenance in terms of all of the chips in the trucks and some of the software upgrades and things, but he felt that he just wasn't ready to make any recommendations, and so he asked not to put anything forward for 2018.
Even a little buffer in case a tool case falls over?
Well, tool cases fall under our parts and supplies.
Okay.
Again, capital outlay is anything $1,000 and over, and so, the tools tend to fall under our parts and supplies budget, and we have done about a $5,000 a year commitment the last few years to upgrading tools for not only the main shop, but the outlying shops, so that we have standardized quality tools that will last. And we're on track. It's working well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Commissioner DuKirk. And then, the last two categories are the work for others and the authorized work contribution for our newer commissioners. The work for others includes things such as the plowing that we occasionally do for, say, the Cook County Visitors Bureau. We sometimes help the school district out. We do have a regular maintenance contract that we execute with the Grand Portage Tribal Council, and so we're billing there. And then, any other small things that might arise. It's not a lot of money, as you can see. It tends to run $8,000 to $10,000. Then, we do have, of course, the fuel for resale, which is on Line 77, and the supplies of work for others. That's why that line item tends to run so high. We have, of course, the joint fueling facility that this covers, and we have all of our partners. For those who are newer, they would include county cars, the airport, the sheriff's office, search and rescue, the hospital, and indot. I think that's everyone.
State Patrol?
I'm sorry?
State Patrol, too?
No. State Patrol is not under our joint facility. So, we have a system that is close to 20 years old, and as we talk about, you know, needs in the next five years or so, that will be something we will probably need to discuss. Again, that is dependent on what the new engineer sees as a concern, but our technology side, of course, is extremely outdated. We just limp it along from year to year, and we are able to do that, but I am not sure how much longer Gasboy will support us in terms of keeping that system operational because the support has already gone away in terms of the computer support. They no longer support the system. So, just to be aware of. It was projected to be a 20-year system, and we are nearing the end of those 20 years. So, we have, of course, the pass-through money of the special service districts that we administer, and we are, we have, of course, Evergreen Road, Irish Creek, Mile of Pine, Rose Bush Hill, which is our newest, Foragers Point, and then West Rose Bush Lane. So, I don't know what might be added in the upcoming years, but it seems that there are discussions every year. Again, that's basically just a pass-through service. We have a small administrative fee that we apply based on the policy that the board reviewed in 2011, and we provide either summer and winter maintenance oversight or seasonal, depending on what the particular SGSD subordinate governmental service district wishes. So, some are only winter maintenance. And I'm just going to touch on the authorized work contribution. It's not a large part of our budget. It's what I had mentioned to Commissioner Duchamp. If there are things that the board directs us to do that are outside what we would consider our normal scope, for example, plowing out fire halls would be an example. There are a couple of fire halls that we just, we wing out when we go by, and that goes under some of our authorized work contribution. Questions on any of that? I went through it rather quickly. Thank you. If there aren't any questions, then we can move on to the revenues page. And, of course, the main section is the construction funds section, and we have added some new lines. And so, what I have done is, under 2017, in that first section, you will see that there are three lines that are green instead of the typical yellow. That is because they are new lines this year. And those lines are the recouping of Muni construction engineering costs. That's the first green line. And then, the second two are transportation sales tax funds, and then the transportation engineering funds through the sales tax. Our regular construction reflects the cost for the 18 project that we discussed on South Shore Drive, and so you will see that that's that $1.5 million with the $225,000 in engineering costs that we will recoup potentially from that project. The next line is the Muni construction, and that is the combination of the two components of the 12 project that we briefly discussed. So, you have the mill and overlay at the 328, I believe it was, and then the sidewalk, which will be issue for the board to discuss for 2018 with a new engineer. And then, you will see that we have substantial engineering costs projected for those two projects, and that's at $73,800. Then, the transportation sales tax funds, that first line of the $3,037,370 is the construction component and right-of-way for the 45 and the 17 projects together, and then the engineering costs are for those two projects. And again, those projects and those revenues are dependent on the conversation that the board is going to have about bonding.
Yep. Scoping of the projects and then the bonding for, for the appropriate scope that the board chooses. So, these are all, these are all our best assumptions at this point. Any, any changes in the scope of the project or any changes in the amount of money? For example, we were discussing scope on the amount of payment that we were going to do on the County 17 project. And if we end up changing the scope of that project and we need to bond for more money, that's, that's transportation sales tax impact, that's not levy impact. So, understand that when we're making those determinations and we're using that funding source, what that means is, not that it's going to have an impact on levy, but it's going to have an impact on our scheduling and prioritization for that and future transportation sales tax eligible projects.
The next line with an amount in it is the state bridge bonding, and that's that $145,000 for the Junko River Bridge. And again, that is dependent on legislative action and then prioritization by the state. We are hoping that we will be able to secure that funding for 2018.
And a comment on the Junko River, we have three bridges that are on our top priority list, Ski Hill, Cross River, and Junko. And the reason that Junko is reported and shown here is because of the proximity to other projects on the schedule for 18. Neither, none of them are on the current list because they haven't, the legislature needs to get together to authorize the next list. So, we're not currently on, we're not in the current hierarchy for bridge bonding, but we will have our applications in to be eligible for the next hierarchy for bridge bonding, and then we'll schedule those things along with other projects in the area so that we can minimize our mobilization costs related to those projects. I came up with one. This is a very different experience sitting over here. I'll just...
Does anybody have any questions about that section of the revenue? The next section is a standard section. You will see that we have our CASA regular maintenance and maintenance for equipment depreciation, and then the municipal maintenance. The most marked change from prior years for the newer commissioners is that the needs formula was redone and applied for 2017, and as you can see, our Muni maintenance went up significantly, and actually, our regular maintenance went down a little bit. And they have made a slight modification from 2017 to 2018 that we've been told about that will likely bring our CASA Muni maintenance down a little, from 122.9 to 125.22. Now, because we don't typically run that high in terms of our Muni maintenance costs, the state has set up a, a policy whereby what is not spent is rolled over into Muni construction at the end of the year, once we submit our annual reports. So, it is still available. It just rolls over to the construction side if it's not expended on the maintenance side. And then, there is a cap on the construction side of $500,000 or three times your annual, I believe, three times your annual allocation, whichever is higher. So, we have a $500,000 cap on our CASA Muni, our construction, and we need to spend down under that $500,000 limit by the end of the year, or have the board pass a resolution that allows us to overrun that in any given year. And Engineer Betts had provided a fairly aggressive CASA construction schedule that would have kept us under that cap with some of the projects projected, most notably, of course, Fifth Street, right? I got to stop and think. Yes, Fifth Street. The old...
CASA 15.
Yeah, CASA 15. Well, I'm talking a lot of numbers. My mind couldn't jump to the CASA number. So, those will be things for the new engineer to discuss and to work with, both the board and the city on in upcoming years. So, that's a quick history lesson on some of that. Are there any questions on that? Just for the newer commissioners, we do expand our, our maintenance funds for, every year in terms of the CASA maintenance. We do a lot of work, and the annual report gives you a detail on those different categories and the average cost per mile at the end of each year. So, if you want, we can always go over that when we're doing an update from, from the annual report. If you go down to our Superior National Forest Funds, you will see that that number has been all over the board the last five years. We took a significant cut in 2017. Our auditor treasurer can perhaps speak to 2018 if he has any inklings as to what might happen?
Well, there was no new renewal of the statute, the formula that allowed the higher numbers that you saw in the past. So, we're back to the old formula, which we went to last year and cut our funds there. It's really based on how much work is done in the forest. Now, you get 25... Now, you get 25% of that, except now it's a formula, so it's based on a yearly average. But for a while there, we had, we had our Title II, Title III, Title I funds. Well, that law has never, has not been renewed. So, we won't see those higher numbers until, or if that's ever renewed. So, this is the new reality.
Our charges for services reflect the work that we do for other agencies as well as the fuel. And so, you can see that in particular, in 2014, when fuel prices skyrocketed, we had an unprecedented number there. But again, that's pretty much pass-through because on our fuel, we add seven cents a gallon for administrative above the cost that we pay. And so, most of these costs are basically a pass-through. So, with the fuel prices down, those numbers are lower, of course. And then we have our miscellaneous revenue. The town road allocation is one of the things that we simply administer. That money goes to our townships based on their certified road miles. We certify those miles annually in October and report to the state. And then that allocation is administered to us in early January, maybe February. And then we have until the middle of March to distribute that to the townships. And we have a formula that the board approved based on miles and population that we distribute those monies each year. Sales of equipment, you will see that that is fairly low for 2018. And that has an assumption that the board will probably want to discuss. That is for the sale of the two pickups only. The maintenance supervisor, Russ Kleigstad, is requesting that we keep that tractor. And he has a number of operations that that could assist with. Of course, one is the mowing, but the other issues are much more significant. We could do blading. We have a rear blade that can be mounted on that. We can use that for sweeping. We can do shoulder work by attaching the American disc that we have for it. And then there is the possibility of adding a rear blower to augment the skid steer work in the winter. And he figures his estimate for sale of that tractor would be about $15,000. So, that is something that we will have to discuss.
So, it's really, it's a lack of revenue, but the use and the value of that use is a real positive.
Yes. In fact, the mechanic, the shop foreman, Steve Butts, came in and visited with me again this morning and was talking about some of the things that he really sees this doing to augment the work that the maintenance staff does. And his input is quite valuable. He's been here over twenty years. So, he, he sees big picture.
I also happen to know that he's very fond of older equipment.
Sometimes it's better.
Not when he has to fix it, but.
He can actually fix old equipment.
Do you have anything you want to say there?
I don't.
And then, of course, the last section shows the levy, projected levy for 2018 at $2,404,940. That is an increase of $270,740 over 2017. And $150,000 of that, of course, is the addition of calcium chloride back into the budget. You will see that we have balanced the budget so that we do not have to use any of our reserves. And that is, I believe, an assumption from the last couple of years in light of what had to happen earlier in this decade, where reserves were hit hard.
And I would, I would suggest that another strategic consideration is talking about fund balance assumptions. And this year is not the year to think about putting more in there because of the impact on levy, but this is the year to, to start talking about what our, what our next five to ten-year plan are and what our fund balance needs to be in not only the general account, but in these other ancillary accounts, so that we can, so that we can take care of business if something doesn't go the way we plan.
What's the fund balance at right now?
Oh, for.
Sorry. Who's fund balance?
Hers.
We've been.
It's, as our auditor treasurer, Mr. Powers, likes to say, it's a moving target. And so, at the end of last year, our fund balance was right at a million dollars. And we are hoping to be in that range again at, at year-end.
Don't you have a statutory requirement that it has to be at a certain level?
No, we do not have a statutory requirement. Commissioner DuKirk.
So, the 2017 budget for Roden Bridge is 5.5. And the final number for eighteen, if we approve it, is 10 million. So, just before the story goes out that we've more than doubled the Roden Bridge budget, the levy change is 270,000 if we leave in calcium chloride. Because I know sometimes the, the story goes right to that bottom line and skips everything else. So, that's an accomplishment between the, the sales tax and other things that we've done. And it's long overdue.
And that's an important point, Commissioner DuKirk. That's one of the things Engineer Betts spoke to every year. The biggest change is always on line two CASA regular construction. Some years, that's 1.5 million. Some years, it's 2.9 million. For 2018, it's 1.5 million, but we have over 3 million of new costs in the transportation sales tax projects. That's where our change comes.
Thank you for everything so far. And I would just appreciate, again, just a summary of those bottom numbers, just for clarity. So, in other words, yes, the.
Overall change.
The overall change is a lot, or 5 million. But that is transportation. Am I understanding that correctly? That's basically transportation.
The overall, the overall change is four and a half million.
Okay, thank you.
And, and more than three and a half million of that is, well, all of that is, is in transportation sales tax eligible funds, projects.
Three and a half is transportation tax. Of that four and a half million increase in spending. And then the remaining is.
Federal and state.
Federal and state.
The bulk of that is federal and state funding. We do have $150,000 in calcium chloride.
That's the new.
That's the new item. And then we, and then, of course, we do have the projected personnel changes.
Right, 2.5%.
And the health insurance. So, overall, our levy impact is 270,740, including the 150,000 for calcium chloride.
Thank you very much. Excellent summary. Great, other questions? That was an extremely complicated scenario spelled out in an hour. And I would imagine that, you know, for us, just seeing it now, it'll take some digestion. And so, my question would be, so, we have this, we have a proposed final number. So, the next steps are?
Madam Chair Commissioners, we could have a conversation about it now, and maybe that's appropriate, and I'll just take that out of my administrator's report and let you know what I, what I anticipate that would be. So, today, we're reviewing generally the budgets of the Highway Department, and after our break, law enforcement. Next week, we're going to have a conversation about Health and Human Services budget, and then our general fund assumptions. And then we're also, so then today, we're also going to have a conversation about the schedule of the rest of the meetings that we have to have conversations about these budgets. So, we've got August 22nd, we'll have a budget committee, regularly scheduled meeting. August 29th, we're going to have that work session from one to four, where we're going to, we're going to take the work that we've done this week and next week and consolidate that and ask some questions. So, in the interim, what I would, what I would ask is if commissioners individually have questions, get those to me, and we'll bring those to the table on the 29th, and we'll summarize that. We'll talk about some of our assumptions, some of the individual points. If we want to go back and revisit some of the strategic issues, we can schedule time to do that. We are going to have a, Ellers will be here, they're planning to be here the Monday night, September 11th, to hold a town hall meeting related to the financial management plan. And then we wanted to schedule some town hall meetings related to the 2018 budget and the summary impact of the budget and some of the general assumptions in the major funds. And later today, I want to have a conversation about what each of your availability is. Right now, I'm proposing that we have an east end meeting, a west end meeting, and a central meeting. And I might even suggest that the central meeting be here on that 11th, after we have that financial management planning meeting, take a break, and then convene a town hall meeting related to budget. But then I, I want to talk to commissioners about the dates that work for them, the locations that are best in their districts, and, and talk about what those meetings would look like. So, that's a conversation that I want to have after the break when we get to our administrators, the, the rest of the administrators' report. But it's appropriate now to, to give you the context to say, here's the other opportunities we're going to have to have input on this. And this is just now us sharing the work that the department heads have put together in summary form. And then Brady's staff has been very, very busy in, in entering that, that information and making sure that you're going to have that available in a format that you're used to seeing.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or?
You own up $270,000, and $220,000 of that is new equipment purchases?
Actually, our new equipment purchases are less than they were last year. So, the $270,000 of budget impact is 150 of calcium chloride, and, and the rest of that is the assumptions on wages.
Take that tractor for 140, and then the mini excavator for 80, that's $220,000. And if Steve says the tractor's in working order and he wants to keep it, why replace it?
And I, and I would suggest that we have a conversation about our capital equipment plan in general and not line item, those things. And we, we can certainly have that conversation. But I don't.
I think everybody seems to have deaf ears here. The County Highway Department's the biggest complaint about the county's spending. You know, doesn't anybody but me hear that? Am I the only one that hears that?
Well, no, but I think that's what we're trying to, we're reviewing it now. This is the first time that we have to do this. And to, to have this scheduled so that there will be other conversations, and there will be hearing from those folks.
I understand.
The town, the town meetings will be very important so that our ears are not deaf. But it, it takes this process to be able to hear it all, process it, and then make good decisions. And that's what I have to say about that. So, yeah, I think that's, any, any other questions about that process for having about this?
I know when I started, the first thing I wanted to do was cut out all the equipment purchases and whatever else I could do in the Highway Department to cut budgets. And I was on the budget committee when I came in, when we had the budget committee and went through the line items and worked with Lisa and some explanation of what's going on. And it's just not that simple to cut it out when our equipment is down. If you take a look at the rental costs, we've had situations where we've had a transmission go out, or had an engine down, and we've had to wait, and it's thousands of dollars. It's on the rental company's schedule, not our schedule. It's, it's a ripple effect that's really difficult, and it's really hard to just easily say, cut this out. And it's hard on our staff. We have our staff scheduled, and it, we've got, how many miles, Lisa?
We have about 310,000 miles, Commissioner DuKirk.
That we're responsible for. We have had snow plows, and I know it doesn't fall on deaf ears, but when I sit and talk to people and they say, take this out, or get rid of this, or get rid of that, or we have a contractor who has bought our equipment, and you look at the hours that a local contractor works with that equipment compared to what our Highway Department works with that equipment, and when the option is, you're not going to have your roads open at a certain hour, or this project isn't going to be done, or this isn't going to be fixed. And no matter what we do, we can't control the frost boils under the ground. But I get calls every year about, when are we going to fix that? And we can't fix it. And so, it's not an easy decision. It's not easy for me to say, yeah, go ahead and spend half a million on equipment. It's a tough decision. But that decision includes so many other pieces that fall into place with that. And I've seen our bills when we get other equipment or hire other contractors to come in, and it's a big discussion. And I'm willing to have it. I'm willing to sit down and spend the hours and say, okay, let's hire everything out, let's rent everything out, you know? What is that cost going to be? How is that going to balance? I'm not opposed to having that discussion again. I'm totally open to it, but it's, it's more than just saying, I don't want to spend this money.
Look at that. But having our engineer on staff might be an important piece that we want to have when we have that conversation.
One of our, one of the challenging situations we have this year is that we have a $300,000 bill for previous budget decisions where we decided not to pay the full bill. And we've also got another $150,000 in calcium chloride because we decided not to pay that bill last year. So, in all honesty, the fact that, that we're going up $240,000 in our levy impact, and we're, and we're paying 400, do the number, $450,000 worth of unpaid bills from previous years, I think that's, that's really recognizing that we're minimizing the impact. And, and the fact that we've identified some of the stuff that's beyond our capacity related to gravel crushing, and consolidated some of the other stuff related to equipment in the outlying buildings, is taking a good, hard look at that, at that plan and saying, is this the right time to do those things? Yes, no? I don't mind having a conversation about what our general service level should be, and then we should have a conversation about our capital replacement plan. I think it's going to be very difficult for us to do that until we have an engineer onboard. But I don't want us to get into the, I mean, the first thing I did, the reason that we have these five payments on the 2016 grader is because I came in and said, we're not going to spend $400,000 on a grader. That's crazy. And every bit of research that I've done said, no, our plan is actually fairly conservative. When I look at other counties and what they're doing, it's fairly conservative. There are other options. We can certainly buy used equipment and repair it, and have more mechanics on staff, and, and have staff mechanics out in our, in our remote shops. There are options, but each one of those options has different considerations than the ones we're currently working with. And just not buying a piece of equipment solves a problem today, but it puts that problem into 2019 or 2020, and we haven't allocated for that. So, we certainly need to have those conversations, but, but let's understand really the reason that we're having a, a major impact on levy this year is because we're paying the two previous years unpaid bills.
Mr. Bishop? I would like to comment because I've received emails and phone calls and personal contact, especially from my neighbors at McFarland Lake, about the calcium chloride. And I sat out there last year and watched the process of finalizing that budget. And, and I saw some things that I've seen in my career that we have to be cautious about. When the mindset gets to do something, we get prone to get a little bit more emotional. And there's a psychological term for it called attribution error. And, and you get caught up in that, well, we're going to either increase this or decrease this. But, but it gets into the, the mix of what impact does this have? You know, and the goal switches from impact to, we want to reduce that. And, and that was a classic example. And I've explained that to people, and they understand it. You know, I've told people that that got, that was taken out of the budget last year because they wanted to reduce the levy. And these people are furious that are out there walking on Pike Lake Road, and they have to wash their tires, and myself included, you know, because they'll wobble when you go down the highway if you don't clean out that dust and dirt that gets behind the wheels. I'm not complaining about myself, but I want to make the point that we have to be cautious in when we make decisions, we've got to always think about the impact. And sometimes it's, money isn't everything. You know, the benefit of something might be worth more than the money we save. And so, I think that's what government's about. That's why it's financial planning. There are needs to cut. I mean, we can cut, yeah. There are needs to cut, I mean, we can cut, yeah. But I don't think we should do it in the heat of the moment and just say this, we should do it just because we have to. So I think it has to be specific to a certain item and have some research behind it and good discussion.
Commissioner DuKirk?
One item for the new engineer. Mr. Betts had discussed with us that residents could purchase their own calcium instead of becoming doing it. I don't know if that's still on the list somewhere, not saying we're doing it, but that was one option. I know I've had residents ask me if they could buy their own and get their roads done, so.
One of the disadvantages we face, Commissioner DuKirk, is our rural location. And realistically, if there was potentially a combination of the county perhaps doing a smaller application with residents being able to tag on, that would probably be the one that would be most feasible.
Well, my residents aren't happy about buying it themselves because it would cost them thousands of dollars per resident, and it's roughly two bucks on your taxes. But they're willing to do it because of the pain they're suffering.
So I think we, yeah, we need to be thoughtful, we need to be strategic about any costs that we decide about. And I think we are, each one of us, very willing to do that. And I really appreciate the level of detail and skill that it takes to produce a budget like this. It's very complicated, and the level of skill that it takes to create a capital plan for the future. So I think out of respect for that, we're having these conversations, and it's a good thing.
One more comment. I really want to thank you, Lisa, for your work on this and the circumstances of the situation, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Bershon.
I know it was said that it's not Lisa's budget, but I'm sure that Lisa has her feelings about the budget and that it's like one of your children.
I just want to do what's best for the county, Commissioner DuKirk.
She's largely responsible for this, and in our first conversation a month ago, she was very concerned about getting the budget done. And I said, I know, you've probably got the budget done, and you probably have the assumptions for 19 already plugged into the computer system. But that's the nature of this work. If we're not looking three to five years out, then we're not doing the diligence that this job requires. And Lisa does that, and this is representative of the fact that that department is run very well. And when we get a new engineer to come onboard, they have some strategic issues that they're going to have to take care of, and they're going to have to talk about some of these bigger decisions that, considerations that we want to take. But they're going to walk in with the capable staff all the way around who will support the work that they're going to want to get done in the county.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Great. Very good. Excellent. Jeff, you're up next, you could just say that.
No, you can. Don't you like it on this side?
It's very different.
The capital thing is, I work a lot with capital. I agree with you.
All right.
I don't know if it's time to do this.
Okay, so next on our agenda, we're going to talk with Molly and Jeff about North Shore Healthcare Foundation grant app for exercise equipment at the YMCA.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to introduce this topic because we've got some questions about it. I think you are all aware that our contract with the YMCA changed earlier this year, and we're no longer reporting their operational, the operations of the YMCA on our budget. We are simply taking care of the building that we own, and they're providing the programs. One of the conversations, one of the features included in that was is that we own the building, we own the fixtures, we own the capital equipment. That was all decided when the Y was originally authorized and built. And we knew that we were going to have to make an allocation for the replacement of some of that capital equipment, largely the cardio pieces and some of the other stuff that have a shelf life of five to seven to 10 years, whatever that is. And in 2017, we did not put any allocation in the budget for that. As a matter of fact, in 2017, we did not represent the budget that we knew we were going to expend. By motion in December, it was approved to authorize a budget at $110,000, even though we knew our average expenditures at the YMCA had exceeded that for the first three years of operation. So in 2018, you'll see that we've got, when we get to that point next week and have that conversation, you'll see a representation for the strategic replacement of some of those pieces of equipment. But this year, we've got some pieces that haven't met the expectancy, or basically they've got more use than we thought they were going to get, and that's a good thing. And Attorney Hicken has found an opportunity for us to replace several of those pieces with minimal impact, so I'll let her explain what that opportunity is.
Thank you. Well, this is one of the grants that I've been looking at, and I'll just explain my role here. Obviously, I'm a county representative, but I'm also a volunteer for the YMCA, and specifically, I teach the group fitness classes, including group cycle, which uses these spin bikes or indoor cycle bikes. So I'm especially aware of the deterioration of this set of equipment. It was, this set of bikes was, came secondhand to the Y as opposed to a lot of the cardio equipment, which was purchased new in 2014. So these bikes were new in 2011 and received a lot of use by the Duluth YMCA before they ever came to the Grand Marais YMCA. So they're showing their wear with cracked finish and rust, and some of the computers go down, are down. We have three that are out of use. There are 12 bikes total. So given that, you know, a lot of the, and Jeff, if I state any of this inaccurately, please correct me, but my understanding is that the capital budget, what we've been contributing for capital expenses has mostly gone into keeping the building in good repair because?
We have not made an allocation for capital. We have an allocation for maintenance. So yes, that's gone into things like light switches and fixtures, bath fixtures and plumbing fixtures and other work that we've done. So we have not made an allocation for capital. Last year, when we had the, and capital equipment, like we're talking about now, cardio equipment is one item. Another thing that we talked about last year when we did the assessment was setting aside some money so that 15 years from now, when we need new air handlers, that we have that money available. We've also not made that representation in the 2018 budget when we get to that. So just a clarification, you're right, we haven't set this money aside yet.
Okay. But the plan is to eventually, or we'll discuss.
2018 will show a line item. We anticipate that there's between $75,000 and $85,000 worth of this cardio type equipment, and we're showing a replacement every fifth year, kind of like computers. So this year's budget will reflect about a $12,000 to $15,000 line item for strategic replacements starting in 2018. But this is an expense that we need in 2017 because of the reasons that Attorney Hicken just outlined.
So it's about a $15,000 expense to, what the proposal that we've discussed in the Healthy Living Committee is to purchase 10 new bikes and keep the five best that we have. So we'll have a mix of older and newer bikes. We'll get rid of the ones that are in the worst shape. So that way, we'll increase our bikes from 12 to 15, and they'll be newer, and they can more match the replacement schedule of the rest of the equipment. So, you know, part of the nature of our county nonprofit partnership, that is the Y, is that the Y is in charge of funding the operations and the programming, but they rely on the county to keep the fixtures in good enough shape to support the programming and the operations. And this is a set of, you know, part of our fixtures that the county is responsible for keeping in good shape and replacing when they get old according to the agreement. So I've, the North Shore Healthcare Foundation grant is one of the grants that I've researched for this purpose, and there are others that I may present to the board if I feel like we have a chance of being successful. So we're here to ask your approval for, apply for this grant, which is due in the next week, and also to ask if the board is willing to offer a match, given that this equipment will be owned by the county and will become an asset of the county and will reduce the actual expenditures that we would need to charge by levy. So I think that it would be a, it would make the chances that our application is successful greater if the county is willing to provide a match. I've applied, this application is a $10,000 grant request, which covers two-thirds of the expense of the bikes. So we'll be looking to supplement if, with, you know, up to $5,000 of other fund sources. So I'd ask the commissioners to consider a match of $2,000 to $5,000. We also can, will be working on fundraising through the Y to cover, I'm hoping, up to $1,000 of the purchase price. Any questions I can answer?
We'll start with Commissioner Starley. Questions? Good. Well, my first question is, do we have anything in maintenance budget for 500, 1,000? Anybody know? Maintenance budget?
No, I wasn't really aware of it until recently. I didn't look, but we submitted a report through May, so at that point, the maintenance looked low. I haven't checked it since then. But I would guess, I could come back, I could come back later in the meeting. Easy to check on break.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DuKirk? No questions? Commissioner Bershon?
No questions.
Commissioner DeShaw?
How many people use the Y?
There are, I don't have that. They're like 1,700 members. 1,700 members. Is that two, 200 and some people a day?
Commissioner, I can get you the last summary of the usage and participation, but the usage and participation has far exceeded the initial plans for that project. And the only thing that Attorney Hicken did not represent is the spin classes. You have to sign up within it. They make them available, you can sign up the day before, and they're full as soon as the signup sheets are available. They're one of the most popular programs that they have there, and they help a lot with retention of membership. So I will make sure that you get a copy of the last annual report.
Any of the border patrol people use it? Park Service employees use our community center grant, and they came up with some money to replace some equipment for us?
I don't know all the border patrol staff. I know of one family that I know is border patrol that I know uses it.
I think I know the same family. That's a good question. It's an opportunity, yep.
You're a good source for us for replacing our equipment, Park Service.
Individually or the organization of border patrol?
We could contact them possibly for some matching opportunities.
So my question would be about the numbers. So we're agreeing to, if we agree to this, we're agreed to apply for a grant for $10,000 from North Care, North Shore Healthcare Foundation, and the overall budget for this replacement is $15,000. So it's really about filling in the five, and where does that come from, and what are we willing to participate in? So there's two sides to this. I just had another question. There's probably little, if any, resale value to the used equipment that's no good.
If we went with, if we purchased the bikes from the same vendor from which these bikes were purchased, they would give us $90 a bike for a trade-in value. If we were to give them or sell them, give them away or sell them to, you know, the public, I think we would ask for less than that, if anything. So, no, it's not a great value.
Off the door.
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are no other questions or comments, is there a motion that someone would like to make?
Madam Chair, do we want to wait until Brady gives us an idea of what our funding sources are?
Oh, that makes sense. That was going to be my motion. Okay. See what we have to take from there. Yeah, that makes sense. So in that case, we'll put it out, we'll table this. We'll put motion to table until after break. Thank you very much. Do I hear a second? Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Can you post?
I'll close.
Opposed to table yet?
Yeah, I think, I just don't think we should take it out of surprise. That's all. I mean-
We haven't even made that idea. We're just tabling until we have an opportunity to find out what revenue options we have.
So you're okay with tabling it?
I'm not opposed.
Okay, you're opposed, great. So motion passes, fourth one. Thank you. Okay. Next, and we'll take this up right after break, when Brady's able to show back the information. So we have another item by Administrator Cadwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners, and what I'm asking today, and I'll explain the process, is today I'm asking you to approve the vacancy for the Health and Human Services Director and name one or two commissioners to be a part of that search committee to join myself and Judy Hill and Carla the Point and Jerry Lilja. I can't even know if I said that right. Lilja?
Pronounced the J in this case.
To join us in having a conversation about making a recommendation on how we could go about filling that vacancy. So I asked to approve the vacancy and asked to name a commissioner or two to join that team, and then my plan would be to meet with that group of people so that next week at the Health and Human Services Board, we can come to you with a search recommendation.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Commissioner DeShaw? Commissioner Bershon? Commissioner DuKirk? I have no questions, but I would volunteer to be on the committee. Great. And I would volunteer to be on the committee too. Okay. But I do have another, okay, yes, another comment? Okay. I'd like to bring up at this time, just for conversation, I've had some folks in the community approach me about why people submit their resignation one day and leave the next day. You know, maybe I'm old school. It used to be two weeks. You submitted your resignation, you had everybody in order in your department, and what I see happening now is that a lot of it's falling on you, and your plate is getting pretty full. Do we have anywhere a guideline as to when you submit your resignation, the amount of time that you stay in office?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. And all I can tell you is that in consultation with the board chair, we made the decisions we did related to these two positions. In the nature, in the timeline that we had to make these determinations, and because of the nature of some personnel decisions, sometimes we can't share all of that information. I'd be willing to have a conversation with any of you offline about why I made those recommendations and why we took the action that we did. But HR decisions like that are really not things that I can discuss at an open meeting.
Well, it's just the basics. It's just the basics. You get a new job, you come back, you say, I'm leaving in two weeks.
Both of these persons that submitted their resignations submitted an appropriate notice.
So appropriate could be anything less than two weeks ago?
No, they each submitted a notice.
Yeah, right, right.
Dave Betts submitted a notice on July 3rd, with his last day being August 4th. We just didn't ask him, we honored that. We just didn't ask him to be here to work those days. And the same with Josh Beckett, he gave more than a 30-day notice, and we honored that as well. And for human resource decisions, we asked them not to be here during that period of time.
Well, it just, you know, the people that have approached me about it, it looked like, boom, they're gone. That's the only comment. So how do we help people understand that there is a process? That's all I'm asking. Is there a process here?
There is a process. There was a process. I received those, we had a conversation with the board chair, and we made those decisions and took the appropriate actions to essentially protect the county as the organization and manage any foreseeable risk. And it's not an uncommon practice. Maybe it's not been done here before, but it's a practice that I have seen from many different angles throughout my professional career, and anybody- And anybody that works in any data-sensitive or financial-sensitive or any other kind of privacy-sensitive issues will understand that there are reasons why, if somebody's leaving, even if they're leaving on good terms, that you would not ask them to fulfill the last, the days that they've given as notice.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Did we go through the whole? Okay. Commissioner Kirk, you have a go?
Motion to approve and appoint Commissioner Sterling and Seabirdson to the committee.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We should do Kirk.
Just to address the general question of employees and notice, and Jan, you can answer this as a business owner, anyone who's worked in a business or been in a business. I have witnessed hiring employees on contract and them leaving weeks before their contract is out, even when there's a pending bonus on them completing their contract. I mean, there's any gamut, and yes, it's a change of the times. Things are very different than they used to be years ago, where when people said they were going to come to a job and work a job. I mean, I have watched supervisors leave a job with no notice at all. It was assumed that they went to visit family out of town and they never came back. So this is not unique to us. This is just, I mean, Brady, tell us about when you came here. You told me a story about your first week where you're like, hmm. It's, it's very different. You start a job with assumptions, you get into it and things happen and you just, and some people fight or flight. Some people just fly. They don't stick it out. And so, you know, you can't force someone to stay at a job. You can't say, "You have to give me two weeks' notice" because in some cases, it'll be the most horrible two weeks for everybody else. You know, we filled a land services position. And what, what did they last? Like not even 30 days? And they got another offer that they weren't expecting. So it's, it is a sign of the times. It's a different world that we live in and, you know, to the staff we have here, thank you. Thank you for sticking it out.
And I think your question was really about our policy. And I think our policy is to give proper notice and in these, these cases, they do. So it's really about the circumstances beyond that, that, that the times are different. And it's not something that we can really talk about publicly. So, but I think we have good policies. So if your question is about, do we have good policies? I think, in this regard, I think we do. But I think it might be useful to review those and just have a conversation about that. So we are doing, you know, so that we know, we can all feel confident that our employees do feel protected and that there are good, well spelled out policies for our staff coming and going. Thank you. So we need to vote, right? Or Commissioner Bershon?
No, that's okay. I'll pass. House is going to come in. Well, I guess, what I would like to say is that, having worked in management, that, you know, with an administrator and, and HR staff, that we, we, we need to trust or place authority with administrative, you know, discretion on some, some things case by case. So if we get an automatic policy that's saying that you got to stay in the job for two weeks after you possibly have been, you know, there's problems, that's not to the benefit of everyone. So I think, you know, as we go forward, we should take things case by case and honor, you know, privacy issues because that's by law. We have to do that in state statutes. So I would hope that when we, you know, consider these things, we need enough flexibility for the administrator to make good decisions that are in the best interest of the organization.
Thank you. Yeah. And there was a vote participation in that decision too, wasn't there? That's what we can say about that. So back to the motion that's been seconded to approve the vacancy for PHH's best director and to approve the committee that will be working on that. Is there any further discussion? Are there any folks opposed to the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's take a break and, let's see. I'm just looking to see when.
She's just taking notes for us.
Yeah, so Valerie, you're on the agenda for 11:05, but I'm thinking that we're, we're kind of ahead of schedule.
Okay.
Although our next item is not until 10:45, but.
I have someone else joining me who is not here yet, our fire vice coordinator.
Okay, great. So, yeah, but let's break until 10:20. Thank you. If anybody wants to start on target, so. Donna's the last one.
Good. I do too. I just.
Good, Sam, how are you?
Good. How are you? Who never thought that hat juggling would actually be a skill?
I don't know if I can juggle, I can juggle uniform size and weight things. Three of them at a time.
See, I think it's interesting, you juggling, then we just throw stuff in there, see if we can freeze that. And I'm not sure if it's the number or the artist's job.
We'll check out.
Four.
Oh, yeah? Yeah. I do, I've won a lot of ones. The walls and stuff. Yeah, I don't have the skill set for it.
This one has less salt.
I can keep it going by accident.
I actually still have.
Oh, that's like kettle pot. Sweet.
My car, I pull it out every once in a while. Use it, that's what we need.
Yeah, and one ball juggling, I guess it doesn't matter what.
Now, careful balancing that and be able to improve all of these things.
It's a do.
Do the do, do what, do what's right, do it again.
Do as often as you can.
Do it over.
I actually, I was kind of, I was just going to do something.
Just to do it?
Just, just like you said, doing something.
Weekend coming up for you?
Yeah.
A lot of people are on.
Yeah, I betcha, your department gets pretty busy with traffic. Got to put up a lot of barricades.
And them up. I'm just going to go through the line. These are properties I want to finish with.
Was that right?
Looks like it blows. And go ahead and put a green one.
There you go.
Is he, is he still around? It looks like he's just ready to fall over.
So, did you, you were, you're a lion. Yeah, so you had a busy weekend.
Yeah, well, actually, I had to leave town. I'm going down to the middle race on Friday.
Middle race. I know, same on Bonchala. I get the middle race.
Well, usually I do it Saturday too.
Wow, I saw the fish talk for the first time.
I had things going on in Farland on Saturday. I get back on Sunday.
Mesh, how are you?
Good, I'm fine.
Good, thank you.
I got out of it on Sunday.
Okay, you're in a big weekend.
Yeah, I always think about this committee, we do like 12 months worth of socialization in like six weeks.
Oh, are you? Awesome. Where's that?
Focus on that six weeks and particularly this week. You know, with Fishman's technique, a lot of people come and.
I think Mike Carlson.
Good excuse to go.
That's great. Yeah.
I think we have to, somehow or the other, it's so fancy. So few people, you know, we're just going to have two meetings and we're all.
I would love for the whole event to become more professional. And the Lions could be a vendor and do the fundraising. Do the, they'll hire an event. This is very important.
Well, it's a very important.
And to.
Yeah. And it's a unique series. We just think it's worthy of that.
He's pretty sure all.
I think the Lions.
But you know what I mean, so that's.
Years and years.
And the water, I was just going, a lot of this is made in water.
Yeah.
We tried to get that. It was beautiful. I spent a lot of time.
You're like, I mean. The last one.
Somehow or the other, it's just, you know, I mean, no one uses it anymore. They want to do it.
Nobody knows how to do it.
But now, you know.
So it's a new system.
But I have been around so long that he knows, he knows it. But if it wasn't for him, that would have never been a problem. As an, we need to institutionalize it.
Yeah, we need to institutionalize it, professionalize it.
And I think maybe.
First time ahead of our schedule.
It's been a drift. But, you know, at some point, things are important. Let's do it right. I mean, the Lions could gladly give up five grand out of there. Part of our profit to fund this event.
I don't think they should have. Yeah.
Well, someone's got to pay for the court. Or she'll come out of there. But there's other events too. Maybe we need.
I bet you guys want.
Change your, eyeball.
I know we've got to run off. Because of our organization.
Our organization. Let's just take this on.
It's very funny, isn't it? Well, my friend went there, she said it's funny. Parkrun. Yeah. She's been to Alex's. She's been there. How is that tax money?
Someone uses it.
They have pinged it. Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah, no, there's, there's another one. But also, from a business standpoint, we have like six, five to six weekends in a year if one isn't done well.
I'm pretty sure one, I have never had that issue. I think we'll be okay. I don't think you'll ever ask.
Over and over to run yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true. It has to check them out. Yeah.
So how is your fishing?
Just what I need.
Sure, you're doing. You're like a little skinny.
You can only watch people so far.
Yeah, but it's always.
I'm a bit skinny.
But the Lions are still being involved in the pools and their opportunity to fish in.
Forget the lineups.
The lineups. Seriously, because that whole event, starting with the lineups better. Really, the meat of it is the lineups.
The lineups.
It wouldn't be there without us. It's all about us. That's real. Let's be real. The real. Yeah, it's three kids.
I want to tell you that procedurally, I was against it. Because I think the practice in the past has always been. The supply.
I did my socializing for the year. I was against that. I used to do online. I don't think that's, how do they call it? They shut the cans and that's all. It's sort of a procedure thing. Oh, why? If you couldn't get in trouble up there, you're bad.
I know, but I think.
I remember it was a month before. They find out that the two, what do they call them? Acquainted.
That's where we got confused.
We'd show up and figure out that I actually got both clients.
Yeah.
I'm glad that was funny.
It's not because it's the Y, it's a procedure.
There's a lot of stuff up there.
We should, we shouldn't tell this. We didn't see too much of that.
A lot of locals would look crazy there. It was like a big local bar.
Well, I still think that one's.
Lots of alcohol.
So should we have any?
It was fun. I have a decision.
And you're saying the supply budget? We don't have a supply. Yeah.
Well, my point is strictly on financial.
Because we should have a budget.
You don't budget.
Mitch, how you doing?
We don't either. We took it on the fun.
Doing good.
Right.
That's my point.
Not every year, but I go there. I mean, I try to, but half the time I get very slammed.
We could transform.
I'm addicted to coffee.
Color, the sound.
Started. But you got any. Miffle? Bill? I don't see that about Donna's.
I was enjoying.
Well, that's true too.
Except Donna's been quagging. Did you come up last night? Grace quagging. Nice morning for it.
Jeff left and said, "I came to coffee with milk."
Boring. And I thought. Yeah. Boring. Wow. Got them there. Yeah. But milk cause is the reason Donna's to quit. That's why coffee is the best. Coffee is the best because coffee doesn't, yeah. Yeah, yeah. What are you doing?
For the fish picnic?
Oh, yeah, I worked every day. Lot of people. Certainly a lot of people. I'll have coffee with my popcorn. Yeah.
When he got the new Lord in it for his wood?
Yeah. Yeah. He got one.
Did he? Yeah, I see he's back out.
Yeah, he got back out and it wasn't on until he got up to 3:40. So evidently they're pretty easy to put on. I didn't realize. They just snap out of us. Snap away, but if they're not here, they're not going to put us right. Yeah, so he went back out.
Mark went back out yesterday.
Was it Matt?
Mark. Mark's up there.
I had him just went yesterday.
Yeah, I was sitting up here and I was like, yeah.
He, he went in the skiff all the way out to.
He started spitting a little bit.
Wow.
Came back in him down and all he got is both rounds.
During the break.
So sit down trailer, he took off.
Yeah, but he did that.
He's going to stay up there forever.
Wow. We could be there after dark weather.
Nah, there's, setting breaks are a good thing.
Yeah. Did you ever talk to other people? Thanks. And seriously, we can wait for a nice day.
Not yet. It's not my work. It's not my job.
Yeah, I've just been so, it's been so.
Where do I change my signature?
The logo, my signature. The only time you can safely go.
So what should we do with this?
Last week in July, the first week.
You should go up here.
Anytime on that side of that side of the house. You're going to.
Type in signature.
But of course.
I take it. We don't even have to remember anymore.
Oh, God. The other assumption I'd made is that state scarf never rain. We could do this. But this is special. Had to be on state scarf a long time. So, you know, weather, it's weather's weather. So I might ask, I'll have to get it up.
What about the weather now?
It's weather.
No. Look at that site.
Later. I think so, sometime.
I heard it was supposed to rain the rest of the week. Is that true?
Later this afternoon.
Yeah, I heard that. Boo. I know we need the rain, but that really screwed me up.
What do you mean? Do you think rain? This is that we need rain. We have rain every day.
I know that, but it has been, it's been pretty hot in Jersey guy last week.
Last three days?
Yeah, we barely had rain over.
Poured and loosed and it didn't rain.
Well, no, I got in a fine Saturday.
Yeah, but that doesn't wet the ground because it poured. It just runs, most of that runs off though. We need a good.
They both do.
Can do it at night.
At the same time, I don't want it to rain because then I can't go to work and then I can't make money and then.
Yeah, I dropped her after.
And then this winter and then.
Exactly. And then I'm grouchy and broke and bored.
You're stuck here.
I'm already stuck here. What are you talking about?
Well, thank you. Well, your daughter is so stinking cute.
And really?
She was so little.
Yeah, she's.
Heidi's fault.
Eddie's what? Am I done?
He's just blaming you for some.
Oh, it's me.
Blaming you.
The weather is all my fault. I have complete control over the weather.
Oh, you wouldn't.
I didn't take my scooter on the garage today, so it's not my fault. I couldn't fit Commissioner Snack in my backpack.
Okay. We're going to skirt.
You can.
No. Yes, so it's 10:20. We shall resume. The first thing on our agenda.
Yeah, that's what it was.
Okay, we're resuming. Knock, 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 knock. Hello? We're all here too. So the next item will be Mitch and Lisa talking about the purchase of a mini excavator and a trailer.
Thank you. We are requesting authorization to purchase mini excavator and a trailer for multiple environmental purposes. For me, the main use is digging soil test pits for excavate, for existing compliance inspections. I can tell you that on average, I conduct about three to four inspections a week. And if you can imagine during the construction season, it is very difficult to find an excavator contractor to come and dig a few holes, which leaves me digging test, deep test pits for many properties by hand. So that's the predicament that I'm in. I don't know if Lisa wants to speak on the.
Excavator use in the future for you?
I can, but yeah, I mean, just trying to utilize it for cross department. That as I'm moving forward with projects, whether it be boat landing projects or parks and trails maintenance projects, it'd be a good piece of equipment to have to utilize across both departments.
So with that, we will start our questions and comments. Commissioner Storley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this picture, is that the trailer that you put this on? Or what is this?
Correct. That's one of the trailers that I've.
Sort of like a trailer like this?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other item is pictured here in the second page for the 23,100?
Correct, for the excavator.
Okay. And so that will go, and when you need to look at some land for a septic system, mound system, this is, then that digs the hole for water testing?
For the soil testing.
For the soil?
Yeah.
Okay. How big is this thing?
Oh, it's roughly 4,000 pound machine.
Oh, and you have to carry it on a flatbed?
On the trailer.
On the trailer?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and it looks like that you would have some funds to bring these two pieces together.
Correct.
You have some funds, okay. It comes under hiring contractors, that fund? Or what kind of fund do you have in your department?
I can speak to that if you like. That's a, it's a permanent, it's called a permanent fund. It's from some tax forfeited sales many, many years ago. And we're required under that particular statute, and we sold it under that you keep the principal part permanent, but the interest can be used for environmental purposes. We've never used any of it. So this might be the first use. We've had a couple of requests. Soil and water requested once. So I think it's, you know.
So the interest can only be used for an environmental purpose?
Yes.
And the principal is a part of.
Is there forever, yeah.
Okay, so its purpose is to generate interest?
Yeah, there's over, I didn't bring the number, but it's over, well over $200,000 in interest.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Kirk.
I don't know what to do. Normally, we budget for large expenditures like this, but we have the funds to do it. And I'd be interested in knowing how much we save in hiring contractors on this that will offset that. But, and then we're also kind of at the end of the season. So could we put it off until the budgeting process?
Yeah. The, I can just comment a little bit on your question regarding hiring contractors. They are so busy, as you know, during the construction season, installing septic systems, basements, driveways, you name it, that I see it every time I pick up the phone, they're just not available. And I don't know that they're going to be interested to come and just dig a few test pits. It's just really, you know, they make their, their money pulling the big levers and driving the truck all day. So it's really, it's, it's, it's hard.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how much we've spent so far on the ones that are able.
Yeah.
And I do know that contractors are busy because my garage door has been broken for like two months and I'm married to a contractor and I might have to pay him to fix it or start doing it myself and watch him run. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Verstein?
Well, okay, thank you. I support this. It's wise, you know, if we're encouraging, you know, septic systems and all those kinds of things, I think the government should have some, you know, expedited process to do it out. I know I had it done some years ago at my place in McFarland where I had to hire someone to come up to dig it out to see if I passed the, you know, the soil tests. And, and so personally, you know, that delayed it. So I can speak from that side. But this, I think this is a good way of doing business. If, you know, when we can, I'm sure we're going to save money over the long haul. And then especially if you can use it for something else. It's just good sense. I, I am a little concerned that, I would assume that Fund 85 then is, is safe to use or it does allow for capital expenditure. Is that the only use of it, capital expenditure for Fund 85? Does it have to be for equipment?
It does not have that kind of.
Okay.
It's a very general statement. It requires interpretation.
But I, I think that's very specific to this, so I definitely support it. I think it'll save money in the long run and it'll certainly promote our issues with our septic systems and so forth to expedite that process.
Did you get a few different prices from different outfits?
I did, yeah.
When Kat came and she was.
Yeah, and I've actually, I do have Kat holding a machine, hoping that we get the green light. They, they went out of their way to hold it for me. So I've been doing a lot of shopping and, you know, as a former timber producer and former contractor, I know a lot about machinery and run a lot of machinery. So I really feel good about the Kat Sinclair product.
Yeah, I'm just making sure you got the prices there.
Yeah.
That's probably a good product, but they don't get stuck on it. Look at the ground she's on. She's on the hill.
Commissioner Kirk?
One more question, since this is equipment. Is it going to be limited to who's using it and if there's any type of training for it?
Oh.
Sorry.
That's a good question. I do have a lot of experience. Lisa, I could certainly train Lisa. She could also go to training and become certified, I believe. I know. That's what I know. Any other thoughts, Lisa?
Well, just to add to that, it would mainly be him and I in the use of it. And then we've also talked with Brian Silence already about storage of the equipment and maintenance of the equipment. And so the only other people that might be utilizing it or driving it of any capacity would be the maintenance department.
So are we all okay over here with? Okay, questions? I just had a couple of questions. So is it necessary to do right now versus getting it into the regular budget on schedule? Seeing as we're talking about budget for 2018, what are the benefits of doing it now versus waiting and doing it, going through the process of proper budgeting?
Well, this is an allocated fund for interest and it'll have no impact on 2018.
Good point, very good point. So, okay.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, if I, if I could. Mitch, you had said that this is a special price item. I think we were just looking at it at the highway department budget. We were looking at $80,000 for a similar piece of equipment new. This is 33 for a piece of equipment and a trailer. So the opportunity is in the savings of this piece of equipment as opposed to shopping for something at a retail price later, potentially.
So there's a benefit because the price could go up?
Because the price could go up and because we do have a dedicated source of fund and it doesn't have to have an impact in 2018, so.
If I may just add a comment too, I've done all the research on this. It took me over a month researching different trailers and different equipment across the country. And it's actually pretty hard to find a good used piece of equipment of this nature.
Okay. Great. And I would say one of the benefits is you don't have to hand dig right now, which has got to be kind of a big deal in this country. Hand digging has got to be a big deal.
It's a lot of work with all the rock and the cone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you found a place where to live. You got maintenance worked out. So I would, any other, well, let's, somebody willing to make a motion?
I move that we purchase this, so that's been presented.
You're doing your second. Discussion, any other on the panel discussion? Any opposed? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Assessor Todd Smith is speaking to some abatements. Thank you.
Yes. Good morning. You have before you request for abatements on three separate parcels, although there's six lines there you can see on it. The first abatement is a parcel at the East Bay Suites. This is actually for the East Bay Suites Homeowners Association. I reanalyzed, it's been a tax court case that basically we settled. Molly and I worked together on this and we settled this tax court case because it, the number of hours and the things that are involved in a tax court case get fairly time consuming. There's a lot of different stipulations, a lot of different things that have to be done whenever you're preparing for a tax court case. That takes a lot of time. It was my opinion that the, the assessment was, I'll give you a little history. When, when the city of Grand Marais was reassessed in 2014, this was looked at as one of the units. This is basically their check-in area of the East Bay Suites. It's the, it's the hospitality room, the little retail shop or little, and the check-in area. And that was classified as one of the units because of how it's described legally. It was unit number nine, I believe. Well, it's actually not. It's a commercial property. It's, it's, you know, the classification of this is not in question. It was the value that was in question. It was classified as one of the units and was split out that way and identified that way. Well, I, I saw it differently in my reevaluation of it. And I, and I classed it and I entered it commercially. So in the process, it lowered the value about $104,000. So in that process of settling the tax case, agreeing with the attorneys on this, we have to abate the taxes for pay 15, 16, and 17. So that's why there's three for the one PID number. The total tax abatement amount is a little over, about $12,000. So it's a substantial amount. But I think in the interest of settling tax court cases and, and not going through that process and spending a lot of time, you know, Molly's spending a lot of time on it, myself, we have to look at that to, you know, what's the, what's the advantage of it? So that's why we settled it. It makes sense to me. I think it's in line with the assessments that go on. So that was the first one. Second one was a simple homestead error. They, as, as is kind of typical, people don't always pay attention to evaluation notices. There was a change made to this particular homeowner's, it's a mobile, mobile home in the West End. And the classification had changed to only 50%, I believe, homestead because of how the, the, a notice wasn't returned. An application wasn't returned. And I think we sent two letters and it was basically ignored. But we decided to just go back and abate it for the current year. And it's really not, not a lot of money we're dealing with. I think it's $138, so we settled that one as well. Trying to get people to pay more attention to evaluation notices and classification changes and, and we're trying to be accommodating when, when these things happen. There are circumstances that, that come along that people aren't, aren't able to really, or understand what's happening there. So we abated that one. And the last one is, was a trust and we're abating the 15 and 16 taxes on that because it was an error. It was, it was a clerical error that took place in the assessor's office, which under state statute says whenever there's a clerical error, we correct it and we, we abate it. So that's why the list we were done.
Any questions, comments? Commissioner Storley?
No.
Commissioner Kirk? Commissioner Verstein? Commissioner Deschamps? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Support. Go ahead, James.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But if we put a key fawn for a treat in their first notice, you think they'll open it?
There was a dollar. A $2 bill. Five years ago, put a $2 bill in. It's got to open. New work. So, thank you Valerie for being here today. Are we ready? And Todd? Right? Yeah, thank you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Todd Armbrister, our Firewise Coordinator, and myself, are bringing forward the updated community wildfire protection plan. Our last approved plan was in 2009. And now they're moving to have updates every five years following the adaptation of the, the most recent updated plan. We've spent the last several months going through and reviewing the data and updating the plan to current standards. So a couple of reasons why we have community wildfire protection plans. The objectives are that they identify and prioritize the wildland urban interface areas. And this includes federal and non-federal lands for hazardous fuel reduction treatments. So to reduce our risk and damage in the event of wildfire. It outlines the measures or the mitigation activities and the fire danger to structures throughout Cook County and identifies the communities that are most, most at risk. And then when you have an approved completed CWPP, as we call it, it helps us tap into other national funding sources. So we have to have these plans in place to be able to access other funds, many of the grants that we use through the Firewise Committee. So the development of these plans are really collaborative effort. They need to be collaborative to be valid. It includes input from the DNR, the US Forest Service, Grand Portage, fire adapted communities. And then ultimately is reviewed through FEMA as well and as a standard through them. So I'll turn it over to Todd and he's going to run us through what's changed, what's different in our 2017 plan versus the last plan.
Thanks Valerie. Thank you for letting me present here today. So the main, the main difference, one of the main updates this year was better defining that wildland urban interface area. That's where we have clusters of structures, cabins, homes, things that are adjacent to forested areas. And that was kind of a collaborative effort with Lake County. They helped us map those areas.[1789.11] They helped us map those areas. They actually helped all the Arrowhead region map those areas out just with some specific GIS expertise. And originally, the plan was based on 15 planning areas, kind of large, general areas throughout the county. This, defining the wildland urban interface will help pinpoint those specific areas we want to target for mitigation. So, we still kept the planning areas, you can see listed there, but we specified where the wooi is in each of those areas. And the plan actually contains a map of each of those 15 areas where you can see specifics if you want to take a look at all the activities. There's the, you know, a broad view of the updated wooi areas there in red, where you would expect, I guess, most of the population and structures in the county, along the shore, in the lakes, Gunflint Trail. But, as I mentioned, there's specifics of each area if you want to see further. And those are the general, the 15 planning areas I talked about. Those were set up in the original CWPP in 2005, I believe. And so, we held on to those, but we just further defined the woois. And what else changed? We mapped and listed all of our mitigation projects, which we've had a number of those completed and we're still working on projects. So, those will all be seen on the maps in the plan. We also included fuel mitigation projects, you know, from the Forest Service DNR, so we can see that all lands approach to wildfire risk reduction. We updated the Firewise Assessment Data, which is ongoing as we conduct assessments each year. We'll continue to update those numbers. And we increased some outreach and education to homeowner associations, lake associations. We've also increased our media outreach. And what else have we done? In the plan this year, we, we updated the fire protection capabilities, the VFDs. So, we contacted each VFD with their resource lists, any concerns they might have, needs they might have, so that those are at least listed in the plan. We also asked for some input from fire chiefs on their biggest concerns in their districts and were able to list those so that we can try and address some of those concerns that they have. We updated wildfire and prescribed burn data from the Forest Service and DNR, so that will also be shown on the maps in the, in the plan. And then, finally, the risk assessment. This is kind of a review of the county to show where the highest risk areas are and so we can prioritize mitigation activities. And we're still operating off the 2009 risk assessment, but the Forest Service is conducting a forest-wide risk assessment. We're going to, we're going to incorporate that into the plan to help address our highest priority needs. It's not quite finished yet, but the committee thought that we should move forward with getting the plan approved and we can add that risk assessment as an addendum because we're not sure when exactly that'll be finished. But, we still have a risk assessment in place. It's just, the new one will help probably better define our high-risk areas. There's an example of the current risk assessment. It looks at vegetation type, fire history, hazards such as blow down or insect damage, number of structures, access, et cetera. So, that's what the risk assessment focuses on. And then, we had, like I had mentioned, we had input from the VFDs. We also had a public input session in May and we had a comment period where folks could review the plan online and comment to Valerie and I. And we also had input throughout the process from Forest Service DNR, Grand Portage Forestry. So, we did get some, some comments and suggestions and certainly incorporated those into the plan.
So, for looking at the next steps in this process, we're just looking for board approval, adaptation of the plan. It's been reviewed a number of times by all of the members of the Firewise Committee. And then, the final approved version gets submitted to the appropriate agencies. So, the National Forester, or Forest, sorry, Forest Supervisor signs off on it from Superior National Forest, as well as the State Forester, and then the Chair of the Fire Chiefs Association, or locally, the Fire Chiefs Association, as well as our Board Chair. Firewise Committee is the implementing body for any of the mitigation products, projects that are outlined in the plan. And then, it's made available as a public resource on both the Firewise website and the county's website under Emergency Management. Is there any questions?
Great, we'll ask questions. Commissioner Deschaux, questions, comments? Commissioner Bershun?
Well, I think this is important. I have personal experience with this. I administered a Firewise grant to fix up the north road on Arrowhead Trail going on the Farmland Lake. I volunteered to work with Ben Pets to have turnouts and one turnaround down on the end. It sets a dead end here and it is a dead end, but we have a turnout down there. But, this has made a significant improvement. So, whatever you can do, I know, I've been up there 24 years and I think we've had fires that never even got reported. I know I was involved back 20 years ago and 18 years ago. We all had our little pumps in one arrow. Most of the fires were rut fires, which I guess a couple of weeks ago, we had one at McFarland again. But, at least now we got a better road. But, we've got a problem bridge, but I think that's a county issue, but to get the equipment over. But, whatever we can do to mitigate the potential for that, because I know that, you know, I have a wildfire sprinkler system as well as some, but some people could get caught in there and human life is our number one priority. And I think whatever we can do moving forward to protect that, it's important. So, thanks for your work. Support this.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeKerk?
My only concern is that we approve the fire department's levy requests to the taxpayers and some of these fire departments have listed a new fire haul as their need, 10,000 to 20,000 gallon tanks. I mean, some have no, no needs or requests or concerns and some have some rather large concerns. So, I just wonder if the county adopts this, if the fire departments don't come back and say, "Well, you all agreed that we need this stuff, so help us pay for it." Todd. Thanks Heidi.
Well, some of those were, have been in there from the, actually, a number of those were in there from the 2009 plan. That was just part of the outreach to find where potential, I guess, needs and possible weaknesses are in our protection system.
Probably helps them with grant funding.
Yeah, I mean, since all of, all of Firewise activities are grant-funded, you know, I think, I don't know with the, with the VFDs, if they have to apply through the state for grants for capital.
Yeah, their capital improvements would be on a request-by-request basis. This, I mean, while there's a correlation between the mitigation activity and, you know, the activity of the fire departments, the budget is, their individual budgets are separate from this plan. One doesn't, you know, guarantee.
The other.
The other.
Great.
But, this is the technical information that we're required to have as a community that assesses the risk and the mitigation efforts overall.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Starling?
Madam Chair, well, it's great that you were able to update all this and bring it up to speed with collaboration, which is always good. There's a term used in here called dry hydrant. Could you explain what that means?
Yeah, dry hydrants, well, it's a, it's a type of water source for, for fire departments where you have essentially a pipe that's located in a lake or stream where they, a fire truck can attach their hoses quickly to that and draw water to fill up their trucks. So, it's just, it needs to be pumped out versus like a hydrant in the city that would have pressure coming out. So, they're, they're located, we have a few inland. Most of the active ones are on Lake Superior because it's cleaner bottom and easier to use versus if you put one of these in the inland lakes, they often get sediment and things in them. So, they're not used as often inland.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very big project and every five years and you can breathe a sigh of relief. Nearing the end. So, would anyone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, first of all, is there any people opposed to this then? All those in favor say aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your input.
I had a schedule, but you're here.
I'm here.
That's great. And we're anxious to hear from Sheriff Eliason's budget. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Where would you like to start?
Beginning.
Well, I guess, I guess we'll just jump right to the big-ticket item, you know?
Yeah, any changes, et cetera.
Sure.
And, you know, we have new commissioners, so in the beginning is not such a bad idea.
Sure.
But, yeah, thank you.
Well, the biggest change to the budget this year, Sheriff's Office budget, was a request to increase capital purchases to $60,000. And the reason for that is that we recently went to a new records management, jail and management system in conjunction with Lake County, Carlton County, Pine County, and Koochichin County. And that's, what that is, that manages all of our records as far as arrests that were made. And any data that we enter that comes in on a call for service or anybody that makes a call to the Sheriff's Office, we enter their name, their address, phone numbers, any involvement they've had on a certain call. That gets dispatched out to the deputies through MDCs, which are mobile dispatch computers, through the CAD system, which is computer aided dispatch. The jail management portion is all of the arrests we make, fingerprints, photographs, any jail records that we have. So, all of this in conjunction, we need MDCs to do our jobs. And the way law enforcement and technology has advanced in just the last five years is taken some pretty significant leaps. And we have things called e-charging. That's where we, say a DUI arrest, we don't, we don't write anything out anymore by hand. It's all done through the computer. The entire process is done through the computer. Citations, the entire process is done through the computer. Any accident reports we do, the entire process is done through the computer. And these are the computers that all of the deputies have in their squads. So, now that we went to this new system and which we had to go to because of the, the system we had been using was, was a bit antiquated and it was difficult to use, it was not user-friendly. So, we, like I said, with the four other counties, we decided that we would go to this system to keep the cost down, obviously, and for the connectivity for all of the counties as well, especially us with Lake County because we see a lot of the same people back and forth. We use their jail to house a lot of our prisoners. So, the more we can do with Lake County, the better off we are.
And their four counties, what are the other two counties, St. Louis and?
No, it's Lake, Carlton, Koochichin, and Pine.
Okay.
Yep. So, the request was for the $60,000 to buy MDCs. We need 15 MDCs. We have 12 road deputies. We have two seasonal deputies in the summertime and we like to have an extra MDC in case one goes down, we can swap it out while that one's being fixed. Because like I said, it's almost impossible for the deputies to do their jobs without an MDC now. So, the request was for $60,000. The MDCs are about $4,000 apiece. We are going to purchase five of them out of the 15 with Stone Garden Grant Funds and Boat and Water Funds. And so, that, that leaves a balance of 10 MDCs we need to purchase. Now, the MDCs themselves are, cost about $4,000. You still have to buy all the mounting brackets to put in your squad and you have to pay for the labor to have someone put them in the squad. So, that's, that was the, the balance of the $20,000 out of the 60 would cover all of the mounting costs for the, for the squads. So, I guess if you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer.
That'd be great. I think sort of one thing at a time is really good in this regard. It's complicated enough. So, Commissioner Starling, any questions or comments on the MDC portion of law enforcement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That stands for what again?
Mobile Dispatch Computer.
Mobile, okay. Okay. Well, as we say, we have to move along with the times. And I think it would be, well, and in coordination with the other counties, how does that work again? With the other four counties?
We will be using, it's, it's the software system we're going to use, it's called, it's Zerker. And with us, with Lake County specifically, we'd be able to, when we, when we take a prisoner out of our jail and bring them to Lake County now, we have to book them out, bring them to Lake County, book them back in. And it's, and we do the same thing with Aitken County. Aitken County's on the same system as well. But, it will be built into this system where we can transfer prisoners, if we all have the same system, we can transfer them without all the extra paperwork, without the extra time. We will be able to keep track of, you know, like I said, we, we sometimes come into contact quite, you know, with, with Lake County folks quite a bit. And it's mostly because of the ski hill and, and, you know, a lot of folks from Lake County work up at the ski hill. And, and so, when we say they get pulled over for a speeding ticket, their name would go into that system and it's shared with everybody that way.
All right, thank you. Commissioner DeKerk?
So, the 60 is all going to go for this purchase?
Yes.
So, you have no other capital?
Not this year.
Okay. Commissioner Bershun?
Makes sense.
Commissioner Deschaux?
No question.
Thank you. So, we'll move on to other items.
Sure.
That was really helpful to get it down.
I guess the next largest one was the dispatch desk purchase. The dispatchers, obviously, the dispatch center's open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. The.
Does the chair just wear out really fast?
Yes, everything wears out very fast just because of the nature of, it's being used 24 hours a day and it's, it's never not being used. They purchased a new desk a few years ago. That is obviously wearing out now and it's, it's a mechanical desk, you know, you stand up and it goes different heights, different things. Well, when you have several different sized dispatchers, it's being moved all the time. So, things are starting to wear out and they have requested new desk and some new furniture for the dispatch center. That came in at a cost of approximately, we, we haven't got any hard estimates yet, but we kind of estimated ourselves at about $11,000. This will not increase the county budget because we can pay for this entirely out of 911 funds. Any, that's, okay.
Any questions for, we'll just keep moving along.
Okay. Squad cars. I'm requesting to purchase three squad cars next year. Did you all, you all have a copy of this?
Yes.
So, I mean, the reasons why. So, I mean, the, the reasons why, I mean, we, we obviously wear them out during, doing what we do. We, we're trying to turn them over at about 100,000 miles. And for the squad cars we currently have, that's probably a good idea, just because of the wear and tear, and they, these, these, these types of squad cars were really not meant for rural settings, you know, with the, with the, with the back roads, and I mean, they're, they're more of a sedan type, type of a squad car. So that's why we're transitioning to full-size pickup trucks now, because it's more practical, and when calls come in, you know, we, we don't have the option of not getting there, we have to get there somehow. And the full-size pickup trucks, we will push them far past 100,000 miles, because they will be able to, to take the, the extra wear and tear. And still, at the end of that life, there will still be some value left in them if we want to sell them. So my request is for three, and that will replace a 2012 Ford Explorer, a 2012, I'm sorry, two 2012 Ford Explorers and a 2014. So the, the one 2012 was 131,000 miles, and that was as of the end of June when we had calculated miles, we haven't calculated it since then. The other one had 111,000 miles, and the 2014 had almost 84, 83,000 miles. So when you kind of forecast that out till the end of the year, and I shouldn't even say, it will be beyond the end of the year, because by the time we get squad cars here, get them outfitted, you know, you're probably looking at February and March, so it's, it's about nine months from now. And when you start forecasting those mileages out, I mean, the, the one will be far, it will far exceed 150,000 miles. The other one, I mean, the other one will be 125 to 130, and the 2014 will be well over 100,000 miles. So those, and those, I'm requesting $135,000, and that covers the price of the squad car, graphics, the entire setup, new cages, new lights, anything you need for the squad car. The radios and the radars, obviously, we will recycle them. The armor radios are going to be coming to the end of their life within a couple of years, and they will start dying, and when they do start dying, they won't be able to be fixed anymore, so we will be having, for future squad car purchases, we'll, we'll probably be adding armor radios into those, you know, trying, trying to factor that cost in there as well. So the request for $135,000, we have currently, as of July 21st, when I talked to Brady, we had $158,000, just in, in some change, in the squad car budget.
Great. Questions, Commissioner Sturman? Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, so if you take 135,000 out of your 158, you don't have much left.
For this year.
For this year.
Right.
So how do you keep this account going? I mean, what will you start filling it with?
I'm gonna let Brady answer.
That's in the, the 200 budget mileage. He's budgeted 140,000 a year. So that's, that's where that expense comes from. It actually, just bill it here, goes into the car fund. And the same with the jail, and anywhere else that they're driving, that money just goes right into that car fund, so it goes out and it comes back in. We just have to adjust at the end of the year, if, if it looks like it's not keeping up, we look at it every year, we may have to adjust a rate, you know, to make sure we keep it. But so far, it's looked good, year after years.
So this would take you then into 2018 and beyond?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Are you looking at replacing next year?
Yes, we would have two more to replace next year. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirk. No questions? Mr. Bushen.
No questions.
Commissioner Deschaux.
I like the fact you're hitting pickups versus cars where we live, it's a lot more.
Absolutely, it's more practical.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. I just had a, or, is it, are you, are you ready to pass the pen this way?
Are you?
Okay. I'll wait till you're done. Okay. My only question is this 2014 Ford Explorer Eve, which is Ford. That's what we call them in my family. With only 83,000 miles, it's under your 100,000 usual.
Right.
Is there, but you're estimating that it will be 100,000 by the end of the year, is that sort of what, where you fall with that?
It will be far over, because that, that, that is the Grand Ford squad, and that gets driven 150 to 200 miles every day.
Got it, got it, got it. And these are, like Brady said, there's 140 that is in that car fund annually, so this is coming out of the car fund, and it, but these will not be purchased until 2018.
Exactly.
So this is not part of the 2018 budget, just wanted to be clear, we're still talking in 2018. Thank you. And I would say that we, we won't, we don't need to take action, each of these items will take action, yes, so, thank you. Well, we won't even take action, this is information. Thank you. All right, so next.
That, that's it.
Okay, so those are the big changes.
That's, exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on, a lot of our officers use their personal cell phone for law enforcement business. Have you considered putting cell phones into the budget for staff? Is there any type of grant funding or Stone Garden or anything that could be used for that?
There's no grant funding, I've, I've looked into, there's no grant funding that can be used. We've, we've considered it, yes, and we just really haven't taken that step yet. I tried to, I tried to, I tried to, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna encourage that step, if that helps.
Right, yeah, and we, like I say, we've, we've talked about it. What I do is I try to, you know, let the staff know they probably shouldn't be using their, their personal cell phones for law enforcement business or for work business, because those cell phones can be subpoenaed, and anything on that cell phone, that is subject to discovery.
Which is why they should have a dedicated phone. I mean, we're gonna have more cell phone service in the community, it's gonna be easier to use a cell phone and stop at that little phone booth halfway up the trail and make a phone call into the office. There's, there's pros and cons on both sides.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. No, I, I, I completely agree.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Sturman? So, out of all the things you presented to us today for our consideration for the levy is the 60,000?
Yes.
For the mobile dispatch system?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you, I just want, want to add to that, then on the line items on, on my budget where I've, I've cut and I've, and I've increased here and there, when you calculate all that into the $60,000 increase, it's actually calling, comes out to about a $48,000 increase because of other items that I've been able to cut out, out of the budget to help assist with this purchase.
Do you have other questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Would you like to maybe throw the dog thing in there? Throw it around?
I, I, I thought about it, the most, you know, with all the research I've been doing, I, I don't know if it would, if it would go this year. I mean, it would be a minimum of $20,000. And right now, you know, next year, it would, obvious, we would obviously be staffed well enough, I hope. You know, if we tried to do it right now, there's, we, we don't have the staff to do it, but I was thinking possibly, looking into some grant funding, you know, with, with the Stone Garden grant and maybe some of the other grants we use, and I know there are rural grants out there for, for agencies of our size that will help with the expense of getting a dog and training it, so I'm just trying to do a little bit more research with that, but yeah, but it's still on my plate, absolutely.
So would you mind clarifying that? So dogs for?
Drug dogs.
Okay.
I think there's a meeting the other night, and there's some statistics out with, when you get a drug dog, that it was on like 70%?
Yeah.
70%?
Your drug cases?
Activity?
Activity.
Okay, they discover 70% more?
No.
Or they do 70% less?
People don't want to have the dog show up at their house, so they start...
Got it, got it, so it actually reduces by 70%?
Yes, yeah.
On drug, oops, okay, that's pretty amazing statistic. Wow. Just a dog, a train, that's amazing. Mr. Bushen?
I was at that meeting too, that this came up, and, and I agree, and I would encourage you to pursue that, and I know it's difficult if you don't have the staff to work with a dog, it doesn't do a lot of good, you may, but I, I think if, I as a commissioner would really encourage you to see what we could do for the next year on that.
I will do that, absolutely.
Yeah, that's an impressive statistic. Thank you. So, any other questions for Sheriff Eliason? Yes?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I would just point out that the reason that there's not a whole lot on here is because we're using the, the standard assumptions that we're using for staff related to wages and related to benefits for 2018, and, and Sheriff Eliason is not proposing any level in the number of staff or the organization for 2018 from what we've got in 2017, so that's why the conversation has been about the capital items, and because the assumptions related to staff haven't changed. He's, he's got some reallocation from one department to another department, but when you consider all of the budgets that he's responsible for, they, they end up canceling each other out, and even, as he said, cutting into the impact of the capital request on the budget.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Okay. So, we'll look into Administrator Cadwell's report. Which is not little today.
It's not, but we've covered some of it already.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Do we, do we want to go back to that item first?
Yes.
Which I can say. Why? The item is mine, not his.
Oh, sure. Oh, yeah, the item is mine, that's right, we, we totally missed it from the, yeah, good. Back to the Y.
Yeah, so the Y budget, making the adjustments for 2016 again, we're at about, expenditures are at about 59% of what we expect, at 58% of the year, but I think that leaves room because typically our utilities are about 60% in the first half of the year, the winter, and given that, we should come in under at current expenditures.
So that under, how much, like in dollars?
Utilities are at 165,000, so if 60%, I mean, it'll be thousands.
Thousands?
I expect several thousands on the utilities, unless we hit another polar vortex, you know, in November.
Or in September.
You know, that's unknowable, but under normal years, yeah, we'd be several thousand under.
Okay, so we would be covered for the 2 to 5,000 from that.
You could expect that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, questions, comments? Commissioner Kirk.
Molly, when does North Shore Healthcare Foundation approve the grant, if they approve it? Do you have a date?
I think it's by the end of this month, if I'm remembering my conversation with Carl Hansen.
So I would, I would make a suggestion that what we're, what we're looking for is the board's consideration of support up to $2,000 pending finding other, other, researching other possibilities for matching to apply for a $10,000 grant for this equipment. So I think that that would, that would be the general specifications, and the match of up to $2,000, if we don't identify other sources, would come from the, the current YMCA line budget.
Okay, so up to $2,000 that would come out of that line item?
If we don't find other options, as Commissioner Deschaux suggested, and we'll, we'll ask those people.
And also to make that grant look more favorable, that we're willing to have skin in the game as well.
And it was an, it was an unanticipated expense for this year. We're planning on having money in 2018 for some of these regular expenses. You'll, you'll see that next week when we go through the line.
Great, great, great. So, Commissioner Sturman, did you have a question?
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Bushen, I mean, how do you feel in lieu of this new information?
I, you know, it's fine. I just have a concern that we, you know, I guess as long as we don't make a practice of this, but we always, you know, we budget, and it's just a fiscal thing with me, you know, you budget for something, and then we, something else comes along, and then you take it away, and, and you, you know, you play, I, it's called the shell game, you know, and, and, you know, I, I think that's okay on a case-by-case basis, but as a practice, and it's been my observation that sometimes I think we get into a practice of this, and I, I would like us to be more cautious, but, you know, I can support it, so thank you. I just didn't think we should go there, I just thought we should find another way.
And it sounds like there's still opportunity to find another way, this is just to help...
I support it, it was just a procedural thing. That's all.
Okay. So in view of that, would someone like to make a motion?
My motion would be what Jeff said.
Okay. And what Jeff said?
Did you get that back?
This is what I've got so far.
Yes.
Support for matching up to $2,000 pending the healthcare grant, if other funding...
Support to apply for the grant from the North Shore Healthcare Foundation for, for $10,000, and a match up to $2,000 pending research of other match options.
Got it.
That's it.
Good, thank you. That's your motion?
Yep.
Okay, do I hear a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Second? Third. Any further discussion? Are there any opposed? Any opposed?
I'm not opposed, I just agree with Commissioner Bushen, our budgeting over the last several years is to make everything as tight as possible with no wiggle room at all for when things happen, so I agree with what you're saying, is that this is not the way that we should continue, that we should work a little harder on planning and have a little more wiggle room in there.
So you are opposed?
I'm not opposed to doing this, I just agree with Commissioner Bushen.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to Administrator Cadwell's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and we identified the budget calendar and talked about the upcoming meetings, and I think the next thing, then going forward, with Commissioner Deschaux scheduled to end of September, we had identified September 19th as possibly being our target to, to set our preliminary levy, which means that sometime between August 29th and September 19th, we would want to schedule those town hall meetings to discuss the budget. So I don't know if, if we want to identify dates on the calendar right now, or if you want to go back to your districts and bring recommendations, or if we want to have conversations offline and, and formalize that, that calendar between now and the next meeting, or if we're prepared to, to make those commitments now. There are some mitigating circumstances, of course, we're all going to be at the legislative, AMC Legislative Conference, the 13th through the 15th. There is the new commissioner orientation at the MCIT Building on September 6th, and I don't know if anybody was planning on attending that, that's a follow-up to the one that they had in January. That's appropriate not just for new commissioners, that's appropriate for anybody that's interested in that, the agenda that they have prepared for that day, and I'm assuming you've all seen that email, and if you haven't, I'll make sure that you get it. So, on dates that I was looking that were possibilities, it's September 11th, which we've, we've got Eller's staff coming up here to do the public input related to financial management plan. September 12th and September 18th seem to be dates that are available, or the week before, we could look at dates that week too. But Monday, of course, is Labor Day the week prior.
Great. Okay.
I, I don't know what you know about your schedules, if we want to, if we want to pick a date now, or if you want to think about it and, and talk to me in the, in the interim, and we'll, we'll firm those up by next week, but Valerie's very interested in getting some messaging out and making sure that we get notice out and let, and invite people to those meetings, so we want to, we want to provide as much advance notice as we can.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yes, you know, if we were to have a schedule a little bit, it'd be nice... Yes, you know, if we were to have a schedule a little bit, it'd be nice to see if we could, I'd just ask a question. Is everyone in agreement to try to work it out now? It would save staff time trying to coordinate this. Do you have calendars with you?
Well, I don't know in terms of the township meetings. I want to be in between township meetings too, so.
Okay.
Did Jeff go to your township meetings last year and discuss budget? Do we have a first Thursday or anything set up with WTI community? We do a call-in last year?
We did.
And then I'm just going to throw another hissy fit. Centrally located in the courthouse does not serve my population and they were, we had one person show up that was not really of my population, so.
And if we want to have another meeting, a fourth meeting, we can. I think it's, I think it's fairly appropriate to combine the Grand Marais districts in one meeting. But if you feel strongly about having one up the trail, I'd take the recommendation.
I don't know, you know, when you take a couple hours out of your time and bring five staff in here and one person shows up, it was very beneficial to that one person and they learned a lot and they went out in the community and spread the information around. But, you know, for as much emails and questioning and letters to the editor that we get about not being transparent or available to the public and then we make meetings that people don't show up to, I just.
But this, I think we're getting word out quite early for this one, that last year it was kind of, you know, a week ahead of time. So, I don't know if the word got out sufficiently. I think our mission this year is to really communicate those times and meetings early, like now.
And our goal is, as staff, is to provide a consistent message based on the direction that we're receiving through these meetings so that we're holding the same meeting and your responsibility as commissioners is essentially to host and facilitate the conversation with your, within your districts. But we'll have the same staff and materials available for all of the meetings that we schedule.
Well, tentatively, I could look at something the week of August 21st. You get much later than your, you know, school, Labor Day, State Fair, that kind of stuff.
Let's have a meeting at the State Fair.
Well over by then.
And I had suggested that we do it between the 29th of August and September 19th, but that's not necessarily, and we can certainly have a meeting, the meetings of the week of August 21st. We just won't have the compilation of the 2018 budget impacts with the financial management planning. But I think we could certainly have a conversation the week of the 21st. And then they could also come to the one on the 11th that we're scheduling with others related to the financial management plan. So, I think that's, that's okay to consider that week.
What time, excuse me, what time is the meeting with Ellers?
I think we were targeting six o'clock.
Six, okay.
Nine, 11. Good, good date to pick.
When we used to do the excruciating long page-by-page budget conversation and the public was here and we had, well, if you were a commissioner, when we did it, when we did work sessions that were longer, like four hours like we're doing on the 29th, we did allow for a small public comment prior to starting that. It's an extension of our community of the whole, just asking how the board feels about having any time set aside. I know it's middle of the day and it's hard for community members to get here, but if you as the chair, if the board is willing on that August 29th to have like 30 minutes set aside if any public wishes to make comment before we start our budget discussions, or if that day is too full to include that at this point.
It's just what we did in the past.
If we've allocated three hours to that meeting, I don't, I don't see a problem with identifying 30 minutes for public comment up to 30 minutes.
That's the turn on the 29th.
That's our committee of the public.
Oh, sure.
Well, maybe then I can encourage the West Enders to come and after that then have, not in place up, but say, you know, we're having this really in-depth talk and it's available at six o'clock on the 29th. Then.
No, no. Six o'clock is for September 11th. The 29th is a one o'clock meeting.
Okay, well, they could come there too.
Right?
Yep.
Isn't it one o'clock?
Yep.
August 29th is an additional work session for the board related to the budget and the financial management plan.
Okay, so would it be better to have district meetings after that?
Well, that's what I was originally thinking, but now that I'm thinking about it, I don't see any reason why after we've had today's meeting and next Tuesday's meeting, why sometime the week of the 21st, we couldn't provide a summary of where we're at and have a conversation about our assumptions for 2018 and then listen to public input about those assumptions. I don't see that, if that's the purpose of this, which I think it is, then I think it's appropriate the week of the 21st, anytime before September 18th then. We want to do it before we have a, before we have a vote setting a preliminary levy.
And does everybody want to have a meeting that week, which will go boom, 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 Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? For the tiny house.
August, week of August 21st.
Yeah. Sort of what you think, because of central, Commissioner Verstein was saying mine will be after. I think it would be a good time to do it after the meeting on the 11th. Or are we changing that?
September 11th?
I was even considering the possibility of having the Grand Marais meeting.
Yeah.
After the, after the, on September 11th, after the financial management plan, public meeting.
Right.
And I don't know if that's appropriate or not. It's an idea.
Well, it would also. Yeah, makes sense to me. Okay.
So, how long, excuse me. That's when Ellers will be here with, meeting with the public?
Yes.
And then that would take about an hour or something?
We'd take a break and then we'd have a budget meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a.
And people could come and, yeah, and learn more. Yeah, I like that for my schedule.
Yeah, they can listen for the first part and then they can share their comments. Great, so it's really up to gun flint trail, west and east end.
More than gun flint trail.
What's that?
More than gun flint trail. It's way too easy for east and west to say east end and west end. I have lots of things.
It is, I know, it is.
Maple Hill Devil Track, Route 61 that way. Got a lot of, and I don't even know how to reach out and find out what's going to work because I certainly don't want staff driving 50 miles up the trail and have absolutely no one show up for discussion, so.
We had a conversation at the MAP meeting about hosting these town halls relating to evaluation in the spring and budget in the fall. And we've got a commitment with Valerie and the communications team to find the best way to do this and make a commitment to have that public engagement for the next couple of years. So, let's not worry about that. The staff is ready to do this, is ready to have these meetings and listen to this input and prepare these materials. So, let's not have that consideration. If after a couple of years we find that we can get by with two or three meetings, then we'll do that. It's more likely that it's going to ebb and flow over a period of time and we're just going to have to keep modifying it. But at least for the next two years, all of the department heads have said, we'll make the commitment to.
And the department heads have come out. I've had, I have lots of lakes, so we have lots of, as Ginny and Commissioner Verstein. Our staff has been really wonderful at coming out to the mid-trail meeting and that and explaining, assessing and everything else. So, it's been great. There's been pretty good turnout. As you all know, when you offer free food, you get more people. So, I don't know if we do one in the courthouse again and then wait and hear from my district and that's to, if they've got better ideas.
So, do you all just want to suggest a couple of dates that work in your district between now and next Tuesday? And we'll, we'll have a calendar next week.
Sounds good. Okay, makes sense.
I've got one lake meeting on Saturday. I'll see if they have any input.
And everybody's clear about the August 29th meeting is a work session in the afternoon and Ellers will be here. And September 11th will be a public information session and Ellers will be here.
And were we going to have, did we agree on having some kind of public dialogue or?
Listening or public comment on August 29th?
Comment period on the 29th. I think then we should agree on that.
Yeah, we can do a public comment for 30 minutes on the 29th.
Afterwards or before?
Before. Start with a public comment.
And I would say, you know, let's, let's be a little flexible on the time. I mean, if we have, I think I heard a half an hour and I would say that if we got more people, we should take the time to listen.
Well, if we're going to have all these other meetings, I'm not sure that we necessarily want to do that. But because we're going to have Ellers here.
Okay. Well, we got three hours, so I would suggest.
Yeah, three hours goes really fast. For a public comment?
Well, and if it's, flexibility, you know, half an hour.
Depends on how many.
Everyone done at half an hour, let's quit and make everyone go to, and if someone wants to keep talking until 45 minutes, I would say let's do it.
In all honesty then, Commissioners, the best thing to do is to set a prescribed amount of time and set an agenda because if you say flexibility and then you don't meet everybody's idea of flexibility, then nobody's happy. And if we are bringing Ellers up to talk about this tool and we're, and we're using their time and we've got other things that we need to discuss, I think setting a time, I'm not, whatever time is fine, but I think setting an amount of time and setting an expectation is probably easier to manage than saying, let's just, let's play it by ear.
I was just taking issue with the half an hour.
Yep.
I know I was at a meeting that they left an open discussion and I think it lasted two hours.
And I just don't want to, this is very, that first Ellers meeting on the 29th is a pretty important meeting where we're really trying to meld our 2018 budget, real budget with long-range capital plans. So, I don't necessarily want to look at that as the big public input meeting. So, 30 minutes of public comment is enough.
So, we're going to schedule another one?
Yeah.
Also concerned with paying dollars.
Right, 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 right.
Okay.
And they'll be here on the 11th and we do our town meeting after that. That's public. And if everybody else has a town meeting, that's public. So, there will be a lot of public opportunities for public input in this year's budget calendar.
Then maybe we shouldn't do it at all.
Do what at all?
Have a public meeting.
Oh, you mean public comment at the beginning of the 29th?
Yeah, I heard a half an hour and I thought, well, we.
That's what we do before all meetings.
And that's what we've done in the past when we've scheduled.
So, it's not, it's not an arbitrary amount. It's kind of our normal.
And that was at the request of the public back then because they were coming in and they said it was difficult to come in at 8:30 and talk to the board and then not have an opportunity later. If they took time off work, they couldn't take time off in the morning and the afternoon to hit the public comment. And then when I did my last radio interview and said we were doing this work session, one of the things that was commented was, you're not allowing for public comment.
So, it is a really good idea to do a public comment or allow for it. Maybe, maybe no one will show up for it, but it's, people have grown used to having.
Okay, I'm convinced.
To your benefit, we want to talk about it more.
Yeah. So, we're good.
So far.
Okay, and then we'll add our town board meetings, not town board, town hall meetings by next Tuesday. And then we'll have a full budget calendar that will, the word will be able to get out early enough in advance, so we should have better attendance.
I hope so.
Yeah, great. So, comp study implementation. Are you ready to move on?
Yeah, yeah, we can go on to the next, the next item. The review committee, myself and Judy and Attorney Hickon and Diane Booth and Rena Rogers have finished our work reviewing the job classification reviews that were submitted by department heads. And we will be reviewing that at the personnel committee meeting this afternoon. And then we will be moving forward with negotiations with employee groups regarding comp study implementation and beginning negotiations for 2018 and beyond. Just to let you know that that process is moving forward. Strategic planning update. We, we came to you with, with a proposed mission and vision statement and we got some conversations and some feedback from staff. And so, our project, our plan is to actually, on the 15th next week, to provide a brief update on where we are in the planning process and to schedule some meetings, additional meetings with staff to make sure that we have some general consensus as we're moving forward with what the purpose or strategic planning is going to be and what our goals of that are going to be and what the rest of the process will look like. So, you'll see, you'll see an update on that. We'll have a brief conversation about that next week at Committee of the Whole. Highway update. You have a one-page summary from Kristen Foster of the update on the County Road 7 project. I would ask if there would take any questions you might have about that. I think I gave you the update on our planning projects for 17 and 45. If you have questions about that, we could, we could take those as well. We've had some speed limit sign requests from our law enforcement center. And what I've asked them to do is to discuss those at our Public Safety and Transportation Committee meeting, which is tomorrow. And that we actually just gathered all those questions and we put them in a bundle and we let the new engineer come up with, as we, as we heard this morning, we need to have an understanding what our sign program and our sign policy is and who's involved and when is the highway department responsible and when is our emergency services department responsible. So, for right now, we've got the gun flint trail saying we don't want any signs and we've got Grand Porter saying we need many more signs. So. So, we have to.
I'll take them down for you.
We have to identify what the consistent policy or what the specific policy is. And I think we need to accumulate those questions and conversations and let our next engineer help drive that policy so that we know why we're doing what we're doing and not just reacting to this request and that request. Calcium chloride, we covered. And then the last thing on my list was just, just a quick recognition. I know some of you have already heard, but Attorney Molly Hickon was selected as YMCA Member of the Year through the Duluth Superior Area YMCA out of over 10,000.
That's amazing.
Which is why she's working on, she's wearing that, she's wearing that Member of the Year hat when she's doing these projects for us.
Do you have to wear a sash in the ground?
So. Come and see the little plaque that I got. It's my office. It's fancy.
Nice. I know that Mr. Metz probably explained it to us. We have some new commissioners, but I noticed when Lisa was talking, maybe we could touch on the point of our federal and state funding and how signs are a part of that because I know the new construction on the gun flint, the signs that went up were part of the funding process. And so, I think that gets missed, that we're not just popping signs up. And so, if we could, down the road when the new engineer gets here, if that could be explained again.
Lisa made a comment about the retro reflectivity policy and our need to be compliant with that. And every other dollar that we get from federal or state agencies for basically anything, but now we're talking highway, comes with requirements. And part of the requirements are the standard construction, the standard signage, the, you know, all of the different considerations that we have to make. So, I would suggest that the level of communication we're getting from Kristen Foster as acting highway engineer for us is something that we should, we should ask for and get out of the highway department going forward so that we all become much more familiar with those processes and those requirements and that we understand that even when we get grant money, grant money's not always free money. Grant money's coming from somewhere, but it's also always coming with, with conditions. At one point, a couple of years ago, we were talking about a $100,000 grant to get this sidewalk done, but the execution of that grant was going to cost us about $50,000 in resources. It's what I call expensive money. It was not a grant that was well-suited for that use because it had too many conditions on it. Those types of grant with that many conditions, you really don't want to accept a grant of less than a half million dollars or a million dollars because if you've got $50,000 worth of oversight on a million-dollar project, that makes sense. So, you, when you're doing a bike path or you're doing something else in a smaller like that, you want a different source of fund that has a lot more flexibility and a lot less reporting requirement. So, there's the appropriateness of the project and the source of funds. It's another, another conversation that we need to continue to have so we understand what our options are when we're looking. what our options are when we're looking for alternative funds to do some of the things that we're looking for.
It also helps when I talk to legislators and, you know, put things into effect that are great for a metro area that might not work for us. The struggle I have is I drive other scenic byways and there's one in Duluth that is skyline, which some of you have driven on, that's absolutely beautiful. Well, they have chevrons, high reflective, and not only that, they have ginormous solar panels on top of them with lights around them that flash all day long and I'm just, you know, that would be absolutely horrifying in our area.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, our definition of a scenic byway isn't the same as the rest of the state.
Yeah. Again, want to be different.
Well, that is different.
Yeah, we don't, that is way different, yeah. We don't want that. Yeah.
Other questions?
I just, did you do the community center update?
I did not, because I've actually got a meeting on Thursday, so I'm going to defer that to next week.
Never mind, okay. Awesome.
Our, our next meeting with the consultant, the architect on the community center design is on Thursday, so I'll have a better update for you next week.
Okay, thank you. Great report, all right. Employee commissioner concerns reports. Anybody have a report they would like to share? Hearing none. I will be doing the WTIP interview, I'll try to fit that in between meetings today. And then the final piece on the agenda is I wanted to give a summary of the administrator's performance review that happened in July, way last month. And on Jeff's, he's been here now two years and one month approximately. And, and I just wanted to share this both from our HR person Judy's perspective and my own perspective, because we're just kind of getting used to this process. And Commissioner DuKirk was the chair last year, did the, did the summary, did you do a summary? Did you do a summary? Anyway, we're trying to get our policies and procedures more formalized so that everybody feels comfortable and knows what's going on. And I think last year was our first year of this process, this year is our second year of the process, and so I really wanted to give a pretty good summary of how that process went. And so as you all know, you were asked to fill out a two-page written performance review, which we all submitted.
I live here.
Yeah, and, yeah, you'd only been on the job for about a month, so you, yeah, you might not have felt comfortable to review someone that you've only known for a little week. And, and then the department heads were part of this review and I think there were twelve submitted performance reviews and that summary goes like this. Jeff is ranked proficient in nine evaluation categories and overall ranked at least meeting expectations. There were a few outstandings, there were many proficient's. There, let's see, there was O was outstanding, P was proficient, S was satisfactory, M's meets U is un, oh marginal, yes. There were no, okay, I think there were just, if there was even, there was one marginal of all of the ratings and that was in strategic leadership, but I don't want to really, mostly it was above the line. And I just also wanted to comment on just a few of the things. So the strengths, his strengths lie in having a vision and direction, decision-making and accountability. And there were some comments acknowledging weaknesses, noticing Jeff's personal growth this past year and acknowledgement that Jeff has a huge job. And I'm imagining Jeff's job, the administrative role as standing in the middle of a busy highway, juggling many very large plates. And so when he gets a comment that he's not a very good listener, I just got to say, well, if you were doing that, maybe you wouldn't have time to listen at that very moment. So I think it's a big job and overall he has really good strengths for doing the job, but some of the soft skills, I think people have commented on that could use some work. But I, from my perspective, I just feel like, yeah, if you can imagine standing in the middle of a busy highway juggling plates, you may not, you may not prioritize that soft skill at that moment. So I also wanted to comment on that, I really, I mean, not having been in this position for very long and not knowing a lot of administrators of county government, that I think Cook County being an extraordinary place and an extraordinary group of people and extraordinary community, we have extraordinary expectations for our county administrator. And I think Jeff has done an extraordinary job, not just here, but also out in the community. Because I think a lot of us don't realize that he volunteers at the Y many hours, that he's the
Community fund.
Yeah, community fund, not executive director, but chair of the board. And he's also an active athlete in the community and he was active in the creation of the creative economy collaborative effort. He participates in many tourism meetings, he participates in many meetings in Grand Porter, he participates in many meetings, a whole process that actually created that creative economy task force that we have now. So he participates on many levels and the feeling that I get out, get when I'm out in the community is that he's very well respected. When we go to county meetings, when, when Administrator Cadwell speaks, everybody listens because he's very articulate and he's a very good spokesperson for us when he's out and about. And I also wanted to just comment on what we've accomplished in the last two years. As part of having Administrator Cadwell in that role, there's been a climate change and, which has allowed for many great things to happen. We were able to pass the, it's, you know, it's not totally his, but he's part of this climate change, I think in Cook County, and we were able to pass the one-half percent sales tax. The EDA was able to accomplish bringing that housing project before us. He brought Ellers here to work with us on creating a long-range capital financing tool. That is no small accomplishment. We're working towards developing a regular budget, that is no small accomplishment. The strategic planning that has happened this year, hiring Valerie as a communications person is a huge accomplishment. I heard many complaints last year during the budget process that people just didn't know enough about what we were doing and what was happening, even though our meetings are televised, it's not, what Valerie can do to help us communicate and summarize what we do here has been extremely valuable. We have a logo. We have a logo, strategic planning, we have a logo.
That took a hundred years.
It took just a hundred years, that's not too, yeah, too long. And I, and he's weathered many storms. We, these last two years have not been easy and particularly for a new administrator in an organization that is not used to having an administrator and particularly taking over after our last administrator died, it was hard emotionally for people to accept a new administrator. So there have been a lot of things to create a context that hasn't exactly been easy for a person to come in and take the reins. So anyway, I just wanted to say that and not that, and a lot of those things were revealed in the process of review as well. But if anybody else wanted to chime in, you could do so at this time. But I, I do think that the role that we have to evaluate the administrators is a really important one and I was really happy to see everybody took it very seriously and filled out those forms really well and I think it was a great process. Yes, commissioner?
Yes, I would like to just thank Jeff and I've appreciated working with him on the budget committee. And I've been around a lot and, and we've had some good discussions and his willingness to sometimes look a little bit out of the box and, and try to be more problem solving. We have a formidable problem with the budget and, and so I know that his work, he's been giving us some scenarios to try to lessen this nineteen to twenty percent deficit, so. And I, and I'd also like to recognize that, you know, when, when someone recommends to go with some expertise and stuff like that, I think they're very smart. I've been around a long time and have been a consultant, so I know that, you know, people do invest a lot of time, so just going with Ellers and his willingness to do this is not a sign of weakness at all, it's a very good sign of strength to recognize that sometimes we don't have all the answers ourselves, no matter what we, you know, and I said this before getting some objectivity, so thank you, Jeff, for your work with the budget, he's on top of it and I've, I've really enjoyed working with him on that committee.
And there were also a number of goals that people set forth for the future, but I think the getting at the, finishing the comp study, getting it to the implementation stage, I think we would all agree would be a good goal for next year. And then getting to that established, establishment of that sustainable budget, that's, that's really what we are after this year in developing that capital plan. And if there are any other things, I think there's a whole list here, team building, bylaws, bylaws, rules of decorum for the county board, listening skills, employee development, exploring chemical addiction issues, issues via task force committee, those were all things that were gleaned from the forms that everybody filled out. So that's, it's a huge order, but based on what is accomplished in the last two years, seems like we could make that happen. Anything else that anybody, Commissioner DuKirk?
I really didn't believe the comp study would be done on the timeline, so thank you. I know other counties have taken years in just working with the consultant and getting the consultant the information, and so the fact that Jeff was able to work with the consultant and the staff and get the meeting set and hold to it and throw in extra and be flexible, but not let it get out of hand is amazing, so thank you.
Great. Well, I think it's important that, you know, we have all the great things that we all do, we all have our weaknesses and, and he, you know, you're willing to work more on team building and acknowledging, acknowledging some areas that need to be worked with and what more could we say, because we all have things we need to work on.
Yeah, yes.
So thank you for that.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I think last week when we both showed up to the meeting at Fordage on the Highway Seventeen project, actually showed Grand Porter that they are a part of Cook County and many years overdue and they, after you left, I talked to people and I talked to people yesterday and they greatly appreciated it, that we are, we are working for them up here.
Awesome. And that's not to diminish anybody else's work, I've been doing this every day for years and years and years. Thank you for your work too. Brady.
That keeps track of all of our motions. Josh watching the camera?
Yes.
Molly making sure we don't break the law.
So with that, it was a great segue into Commissioner DuKirk's favorite part of the first meeting of the month.
So we have Wes, four years with Roden Bridge, Jennifer Rue up in Public Health, eight years, Michael Kinderman, Roden Bridge Maintenance, two, for two years. Grace, if you're listening, thank you, ten years, you've hit a decade. And then we have Lisa, she was one year in our assessor's office and then we created the Parks and Trails and she was one year there, so two years with us. So thank you all for serving us and serving the public, it's greatly appreciated.
Great, thank you. With that, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second knock me on my chair there. You're going to beat me if you have to hit me.
I'm going to beat you.
You'll beat me all right.